Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. If there's no objection, I'll call this meeting to order at 6:04 PM. Could I please have Councilman Parker introduce this evening's invocation?
Thank you, Brother President. I would like to introduce everyone, Reverend Michael Garrett from Hopewell Missionary Baptist Church. He will be giving our invocation this evening.
Father God, we thank you for today. Father God, we thank you for allowing us to get here safely, Father. We thank you, Father God, for allowing us this opportunity to come together, Father. We ask that you clear our hearts and minds. Father God, we first of all, give you the glory, we give you the honor. We thank you right now, Father God, as we do the design, the destination, and the will of your people. Father God, we ask that you do allow us to do it in clear hearts and clear minds. Father God, we ask that you bless all those that came out. Bless the staff, bless the members, Father, that they've left their family, Father, to do the will of the people, Father. We ask that you would bless them and cover their family in a mighty way. Build them up where they're weak, build them up where they're torn down, Father. And Father God, we ask that you just continue to watch over us. Now, Lord, we ask as we meet and come into order, that, Father God, that you will be the head, that, Father God, that you will be represented, that, Father God, that you will be acknowledged, that you will get the glory and honor, that everybody around the world will see what Pontiac is doing and will take note of it. Father, we thank you right now for everybody that came out. Father God, as we leave this place but never your presence, we ask for your traveling grace, and your son Jesus holy, in the divine name, we humbly pray. Amen.
Thank you very much. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please remain standing as we have a moment of silence. Silence as a community. I want to let the community know we'll be leading, reading all the names that we're aware of at next week's city council meeting. But we especially venerate and lift the name of Randy Maddox, somebody who through heroism and bravery sacrificed and put their life in danger when traveling home in Ohio, stopped to help teenagers who were in an accident on the road, and sadly Randy Maddox lost their life. And they are from Pontiac, so their name among many others will be read next week, but we celebrate the heroism demonstrated in their final moments, extend our condolences to the family, and remember their name and anyone else in your family and neighborhood now with a moment of silence. Thank you. You may be seated. Roll call Clerk Doyle. Carrington.
Present.
Goodman.
Here.
James.
Here.
McGinnis.
Present.
Nicholson. Parker.
Here.
Rutherford.
Present.
Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Quorum being established. Could I please have a motion to excuse Councilman Nicholson for personal re-support? I think I heard Councilman Rutherford, supported by Pro Tem, by Councilman Goodman. Councilman Nicholson's at a work conference out of town, and so he'll be back with us for our budget session on Thursday, but for personal reasons, we seek to excuse him from this evening's meeting. Hearing no discussion. Roll call Clerk Doyle.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. Could I please have a motion to adopt this evening's agenda?
Support.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Pro Tem Carrington, and so now we have that motion before us for adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to amend this evening's agenda to remove the resolution for the appointment of the approving the mayor's appointments to the planning commission, to add the resolution approving the lease for the DPW facilities at Bostic property, and to add a discussion item regarding?
The warrant clinic.
All right. It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Goodman to amend this evening's agenda. I'll review that again. One, it removes the planning commission appointments resolution. Those appointments haven't been received yet, so we'll consider that at next week's agenda, hopefully. We've had a, an item from the administration in terms of DPW short-term lease of the Bostic facility that will be considering that resolution. And then finally adding a discussion item in terms of Councilman Goodman's discussion item of?
The warrant clinic.
Warrant clinic.
A question, would, would we be replacing item number six, which is the vacancies with the subsequent DPW resolution?
That works, yeah.
Okay.
I think that's the most advisable route.
And then the discussion item, you want it to go after or before the closed session discussion item? When that closed session, the budget hearings?
The discussion can come after the budget hearings discussion.
Okay.
Any further discussion on the motion to amend the agenda? So those are the changes, the three changes, removes one, adds one, and adds a discussion. Hearing no further discussion, roll call and adoption of the motion to amend. Clerk Doyle.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. The amendment is now part of the main motion. Is there any other discussion on the agenda? I'm asking, can you hear back there, Michael? Yeah. Okay. Hearing no further discussion?
I have point of clearance.
Yes.
So are we, for the, the question is, are they gonna put the two planning, the people that are trying to put on a planning next week, it's gonna be on their agenda next week?
That's what has been conveyed to me, that our expectation is that we'll be, once the appointments are made, we'll be able to vote on approving them next week.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion to adopt this evening's agenda? Hearing none. Roll call Clerk Doyle.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. The agenda is approved. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Support.
Moved by Rutherford, seconded by Goodman. Not a debatable motion. Roll call and adoption of the consent agenda. Clerk Doyle.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. We are at special presentations, if I'm correct. All right, the first special presentation, very briefly, we want to make sure the community knew that the Pontiac Funders Collaborative, which is a collaboration of multiple funding organizations, philanthropic entities, banks, and corporate donors, they have invested millions into the city of Pontiac and our nonprofit community, and they've just announced in recent days another round of millions of dollars of investment, specifically $4.5 million. So as more information comes forward about how that'll be specifically programmed and what that will positively mean for Pontiac residents, we will keep those updates coming, but we just want to make sure that the news that the Pontiac City Council received reached out to the community overall. So that's the special presentation. Voila. And I'm only coming from this side of the podium, so that way I can make sure that the next special presentation's slide deck is successfully loaded, and so I apologize for my unique standing. Any other discussion on that special presentation about the Pontiac Funders Collaborative? So it's the same funders that did the first round in the last few years, but they have added an additional entity, PNC Bank, has also joined the fold, making a specific commitment to the Pontiac community and investing in the nonprofit and business and entrepreneurial fields to benefit Pontiac residents and small business owners. Councilman Rutherford, you have the floor.
Yes. Do we know the amount that PNC is gonna be giving to Pontiac?
So they all pool their resources together of varying amounts. They don't publicly announce whose slice of the pie is what. They sort of just say, here's the all-in that we're committed to.
Okay. My follow-up question is, are they gonna be displaying this so that people who have businesses or opportunities, so they actually be more accessible? Because in the past, when people have to apply for those funds, they haven't been able to do it in a orderly fashion. So can we just have, do you know when they're gonna do a presentation here at council?
Yeah, that's a great idea. Long story short, we, that's part of the reason why we're even putting the very initial word out. We wanna keep that conversation going so all residents and entrepreneurs know about the opportunities presented.
All right, thank you so much.
Any further discussion on that special presentation? All right. With that, I would like to give the floor to this evening's second special presentation. As he begins speaking, I will be working to make sure that his beautiful presentation, but we have a talented leader in our midst who is from the Center for Employment Opportunities, or CEO, which has now expanded to be in the Pontiac footprint. So Conrad, you have the floor, sir, to introduce yourself and tell everyone about the services and opportunities that exist for Pontiac. Thank you so much for being here. You have the floor.
Yeah, I thank Mike for his great introduction, and thank you, City Council. I appreciate you guys giving us opportunity to come here. This is Edward Galloway. He is our business account manager for the Center for Employment Opportunities. So I'm gonna wait till Mr. McGinnis sits up. Well, for anybody, I don't know if you ever heard, if you haven't heard of Center for Employment Opportunities, then we're one of America's kept secrets. We are the largest agency right now in the United States that actually provides employment and career opportunities to those who are just as involved. We do over 2,500 job placements each year, so we exclusively work with individuals that are just as impacted, whether you are parole, probation, whether you have a misdemeanor, whatever it may be. If it's a barrier that's preventing you from employment, then our job is to remove those barriers. So this is City for Employment Opportunities. So we are a 501(c)(3) organization. We provide immediate comprehensive employment services. Now, what I mean by immediate is this, no other organization does this. When you come to our program, we have a two-day paid orientation. So for both days, you get paid. They're from nine to 12 o'clock. On those days, on the third day, once you complete, we have a little graduation, you completed those two days of orientation, you immediately start our transitional work. That's why we work comprehensively exclusively to people that's returning from incarceration. So CEO's model is based on a highly structured program providing the following services. We provide life skill education, we provide short-term paid transition employment, we provide full-time job placement, and post-placement services. So CEO's vision is that anybody, I mean anybody, who has the preparation and support needed to find employment, our job is to make sure they find that. So we currently have locations right now all over the United States, as you can see in the green, because that's our colors, green, and Pontiac is our newest office. Our office here in Michigan, the first one is in Detroit. Now, I was a participant of this program. I spent nearly 30 years in the Michigan Department of Corrections. Today, I am a life skill instructor, job coach, and also have my own transitional housing program, as well as I do tons of community work. Speaking of games, I just did a federal congress panel. So I'm honored for the opportunities that's been opened up to me, but it's due this organization that has given me that opportunity, because without that, I had that, I didn't have that vision. My whole focus was this, I needed a job. When I came home after so much time, I just needed work. And how to acclimate myself back into the community, really didn't have a clue. I had a good family support system. However, I didn't have the guidance or the vision necessary for employment opportunities. So when I got out and got with this organization that was in Detroit, they seen something in me that I didn't know how to translate from inside to out here. In prison, got my college degree, had a ninth grade education, I'm an author, started my publishing company while incarcerated. I didn't know that these were traits I can use once I got out. Center for Employment Opportunity provides job coaches, career counselors, and they said, we can get you a job, that's no issue. But they said, what about a career? And they set me on a different pathway, and that pathway has literally taken me all over the world, and I'm thankful for the opportunities that they've presented to me. So here's our model. See if anybody can see this. I'll get closer.
If you want to stay with the microphone, we'll have Mr. Martin help shift it so that way. We have millions watching at home, so we want them to hear you.
I got you, I got you doing. So our model, we have our annual outcomes, we literally have a pathway that we try to follow, and in that pathway that we try to follow, we wanna make sure that we do a lot of documentation. So our documentation helps us to be able to do a tracking. It helps us to understand, identify where our weaknesses at, where our strengths are at, but also helps us identify where everyone is. So when we find someone full-time employment, we only, just don't let them go and say, hey, we got you a job, you're good. We actually have a retention service that's 365 days where we continue to work, and I'm gonna let Mr. Galloway, which is our business account manager and our retention specialist, kind of share about what that service is.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Edward Galloway. I'm the job developer with the CEO and also the retention specialist. So as Conrad speaks about retention, we spend, once we have a participant employed, we spend the next 365 days engaging with that employee to make sure things are going well with that employment placement, and also to make sure it's a good fit for that person and make sure the company is a good fit for them. We also give them rapid rewards. Rapid rewards means that each milestone that this participant reaches, we give them an incentive. It's a $75 incentive, so once they get their first paycheck, we give them a $75 incentive just to keep them engaged. At 30-day mark, we give them another $75. 90-day mark, another $75. Once they hit 180-day, it goes to $180. So it goes on up to 365, but we stay engaged with them to make sure things are going well with that person. So we don't just place them and leave them, we make sure we with them and support them all the way through.
So currently, since we've been here in Pontiac, this is our enrollment benchmarks that we currently have here for the state of Michigan, and we currently do 350, and that's our enrollment benchmark. However, the Pontiac office alone, just since we opened up in April, we just started last year, we currently have 97 enrollments that we've done in just a year with just our office, so we're not even counting the Detroit office. So we understand that through this service, we're helping recidivism, we're helping lower that. One thing about individuals when they get out of prison, idle time really can affect a person, especially after doing so much time or doing time alone, and when you have that idle time, it gets you in a position where you can get yourself involved in crime again. One thing about CEO with our life skill instructors, we really work with our participants when it comes to their life choices. We wanna make sure that everybody's career-minded. We wanna make sure that when you come to us, even though you may come with us in a different state, and what I mean by a different state, individuals that come to our programs, drug addicted, still involved in crime, and they get with our program and they begin to work with us, we really wanna transform individuals into professionals, and we strive to do that. And that's one thing of our passion, that we wanna make sure that you are professional when you come to us, and when you leave, you're gonna be professional. We wanna make sure you understand dress code. When you come to our offices, we have once-a-week meetings. In those meetings, you're required to come business casual or business dress. Now, if you don't have that, then we provide those clothes, because we're not gonna give you an expectation and don't think that if you don't have the means to do it, we're not gonna be able to help you provide the opportunity to have it. So we provide the clothes if you don't have them, suits, ties. We literally had a, that was two months ago, we had a job fair here at the lighthouse, being where our office is located, and we had participants come, new, wasn't really ready for what we offered, and didn't know that there were gonna be employers there that were willing to hire them at the spot, but they did not come dressed appropriate. So we literally spent that morning in our office putting on blazers and ties and shirts, but the impact that you see on these individuals' faces when they see themselves transformed before your eye, it's an amazing thing to see, and then they realize, you know what? I can do this. I have some value. We provide IT training, auto technician, truck driving. We currently have individuals who are in CDLs and got their license, one of them just graduated, we're proud of them, CNC machine operators, construction, culinary, forklift, flagger certification, industrial sewing, advanced manufacturing, digital literacy, and financial counseling. On Saturdays, we actually have a financial empowerment program that we're opening up to the public as well. So what we're providing is opportunities for our consumers to be able to have just a broader understanding of finance, even to the point of entrepreneurship, finances, credit, which is something that a lot of us need to get that right, and we also providing these individuals And we also providing these individuals with real estate, so they can be able to have their own properties. We want to teach entrepreneurship at the end of the day. We want to teach you how to be able to be self-sufficient, but also how to have generational wealth, to really think beyond just the natural way of what we used to think is supposed to be individuals coming home from prison. So why CEO? One thing we do, we have transportation. Individuals who come to our program, we have our daily transportation that takes you to the work site and back to the work site. We have a site supervisor. Our site supervisor oversees our crews, maintains the safety, and he makes sure that crews come back and be on time to their assignments. And another thing we do, I forgot to even mention this, we have daily pay. So our participants get paid every day. So on the third day after you finish the two days of orientation, the third day you begin our transitional work program, you will get paid that day and each day afterwards. Daily membership and feedback, that's important for us. We want to make sure that we stay engaged. So we do have a system set up in our main office in New York, and they actually send out our texts and our surveys, so we can kind of keep track, what's working, what's not working. We have direct payment and for our jobs, and we do placements that's permitted. And our monthly incentives and once hired teams, which is what he was talking about, we have our incentives that we give. The scope of this deals with the outer limits of what our services provide. At the end of the day, to make it plain and short and sweet and simple, you come to us in this middle program, we have all-around, wraparound services for our participants. Plain and simple, we just don't deal with employment. We deal with so many other issues. I-9, compliance, how many individuals go into prison, come out, and don't have proper documentation. We just did a town hall in regards to that. And we did a federal congress panel in regards to that. The MDOC is doing a much better job today when supplying those documentations, but yet we still have individuals who come and don't have them. The laws change in this state. We just had the juvenile bill change, which released 363 juveniles. We're down to the last 30. And these individuals are in Pontiac, some of them. We have them in our program who've done 50 years, 51 years, and we providing them with career opportunities. So imagine these individuals coming home, wondering, "What do I do after 50 years of incarceration?" So this service is so important to this community. So our contact information, we're located at 46156 Woodward in Pontiac, Michigan, at the Lighthouse Building, Suite B102. So if anybody have any questions, comments, please feel free to contact us here. Our manager's name is Raul Hernandez. He's out sick right now. And our regional manager is Olu Wattison. You can also reach out to her. Thank you, guys, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much for being here. Can you share for the audience at home your full name and your roles?
Yes, my full name is Conrad Colwell. I am the life skill instructor, job coach, outreach specialist, and intake specialist for the Center for Employment Opportunity in Pontiac, Oakland County.
And council members, you have hard copies as well. If you wanted to acquire any of the information that's visually, we have copies in our packets as well. Give the floor to Pro Tem Carrington, Councilman Parker, Councilman Goodman.
Yes, thank you, President McGinnis. First and foremost, I want to thank you that this organization, I've been reading about it for over probably 12 or 13 years concerning, you know, what New York, the state of New York was actually doing with returning citizens. So I definitely commend this organization that's been on the front lines of making sure that returning citizens don't return to prison. So I definitely want to thank you and your organization for the success rate that you guys have had over the last so decade or two.
Thank you.
Secondly, I look forward to actually coming and sitting with you. Myself, everybody knows that I'm a returning citizen as well. And the key thing that I heard you say is about teaching men how to have expectations of themselves. That's so key in making sure they make a positive transition back into their community. Because if we don't uplift them and show them how to get there, then they won't be successful on this side. So I definitely am happy that you're here. I've also talked to guys that went through the program in Detroit that's been very successful. So definitely, we look forward to making sure, if I can get names to you, I'm going to do that as well. Because definitely, we need that here in the city of Pontiac.
Thank you.
Councilman Parker.
Thank you, sir. My only question is, and thank you for all the work that you're doing, but as you outlined your program, do you also help with finding housings, homes and houses?
Yeah, well, we have, what we do with our housing, this is separate from our organization. We strictly deal with employment. However, we deal with resources. So our networking is very strong, especially here in Oakland County. That's part of my job too, is outreach. So we also reach out to individual programs that provide the housing opportunities for our participants. So we currently have participants that are in halfway houses, three-quarter homes, just to make sure that they have housing and to help them transition into their own independence. And then I have a transitional housing program that I personally have, so it's a pathway as well.
Thank you. Councilman Goodman.
It's good to see you again.
Yeah.
Because I remember last year when me and my intern Genevieve, for those of you who remember, like District 3 intern that we had last year, made sure that I had a meeting to actually come through.
Yeah, you were one of my peace rally speakers.
Exactly. So it was, it's, one, obviously great to see you again, just continue to see the great work that you've been doing. Because as my colleague has said, the work that you do is extremely transformational, not only for people who are in some situations similar to that, yeah, he was, but obviously Pontiac is full of people who need this help, who need this program. I mean, there are people in my own family, I guarantee you, I know personally. So I truly just want to say thank you for continuing this work, and I would love to be of more service in any way that I can because of how important and monumental your work is.
Mayor Granville.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Colwell, for your amazing work and leadership. I so appreciate and admire everything that Center for Employment Opportunities is doing. A lot of people talk about the need to assist returning citizens with employment, but you're living it, you're implementing it, you've been doing that for a while, very successfully. And so I think it's fair to say that all of us in the city are really grateful for the important work that you're doing. I also want to acknowledge and thank Councilwoman Rutherford for alerting the city and me, as well as our HR department, to the recent job fair you had, because it was an opportunity for us as the city to have a presence there. And it's very important that we, as the city, in our hiring processes, be a part of the solution in partnership with groups like CEO. So thank you for everything you're doing. Thank you for allowing us to participate as part of your recent job fair as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Further discussion? All right, let's give the Center for Employment Opportunities and our presenters a robust Pontiac round of applause. Thank you very much for being here in the resource. Are there any current elected officials that we should be recognized and provide an update in their capacity of their elected office? Hearing and seeing none, we are at Agenda Address. Pro Tem Carrington, are there any requests this evening?
Yes, thank you, President McGinnis. Mr. Carlton Jones.
Good evening. I think it's great to be able to follow behind that presentation. I had the opportunity, and I want to say first and foremost, that's one items I want to speak to. I had the opportunity to go down to the CEO office about a couple of weeks ago, and I too was quite pleased to see that particular area of population being addressed. Because a lot of us don't know, that's a specific area of population, like Councilman said, we have a high level here in Pontiac. And we could need, we do need all the help we can get in trying to transform those individuals into a career mindset. I want to say to Mr. Carlton, before he leave, that we welcome him to be a part of the TDC, the Talent Development Coalition, which was, gave birth here in Pontiac back in 2019. And that birth was to make sure that we can corral collectively the people working in that same space. So we welcome him to the city, we welcome that entity to the city, because we know it's much needed. So I just want you all to know that that's what, and maybe I was just thinking, since a lot of you all are new, you don't know about TDC and what, how it was set up, to kind of break down the silos and work collectively in the workforce development arena. So we may have to bring that back around and present it again, because we had presented before. The next item I want to speak to is item number three that is dealing with mixed-use districts or developments. District one, right now, we have a couple areas that we think that has been identified that possibly fall in this category. One is Lakeside, another one is the golf course. I think what we just need to know, if that's the truth, that the city's been presented by developers for those type of changes in that district, we'd like to know that, so we can try to work along. I want to commend our Pro Tem Carrington, he did a presentation in District 6, with new people coming in there, mayor was there. They presented to the citizens upfront what they needed, what they were trying to do, and we think that was a good model. We want to follow it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Robert Bass, are you crossed out?
Okay.
Dr. Deidra Waterman.
Good evening. And Mr. Jones, Carlton Jones, I agree with you totally on we should have some indication of what the zoning changes that were indicated for. But I also came to speak about number seven, but since you added on the agenda about the short-term lease for the DPW yard, I thought I would add that to my comments, because I did hear in previous council meetings that you were going to get a real estate agent to look to buy a property for a DPW yard. And I just thought I would bring up the fact that when I was mayor, that we had the DPW department, which had wanted to reclaim the Collier Road lot, which had to be the DPW yard, and they'd actually done a feasibility study and liked it because it was, previously had been used for DPW yard, it had enough space for all the trucks and vehicles of the city, had a big fenced yard which protected, it had a huge facility, which also had offices in it, which allowed space for DPW. So all that had been investigated, and all they were waiting was just to get a DEQ okay because of the methane, vapor collection system. But they had wanted to do that, and I'm wondering what happened in the interim, and maybe during, when you're talking about the short-term lease while you're supposedly looking for this other property that the city would have to buy, which is questionable, just ask the question, why are we buying it, that there is a suitable place to put our DPW department? But what I also wanted to bring up is that I see that you have on here on the agenda the special budget hearings that you're going to have, which means that according to the budget ordinance, you've got the mayor's proposed budget. But I'm bringing up again, where is the audit for the year ending, January, June 30th, 2021? We still don't have an audit, and we keep getting these funny excuses. So something's very strange, I'm running out of time now, but I hope you will address that, because you should be asking that, Council. Where's the audit?
All right, thank you. Ms. Ilah Miller, Agenda Address, what item? No? Okay. Ms. Darlene Clark, what item?
Item number three.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Council, administration, mayor, deputy mayor. Darlene Clark, speaking as a resident. Item number three is not so much as for the pod or the dumpsters, is for the lack of communication that the residents is having with the administration as well as the council. Each, each group, administration informed their opinion based on the ordinance, council feel based, their opinion based on their district and what their eyes see. But at the same time, you don't base the opinion of logic and reality. Pontiac, as I addressed in the planning meeting yesterday, that it's low income. The highs that come maybe, maybe like $40,000 to $50,000. Very few people here. Bringing in demands for the city or changing ordinance without a lack of communication only cause confusion. And at this point, that's what's happening. Council has confusion, if the council have confusion about statements and the way the ordinance is written, then how do you think the residents have their, they're just as confused? The administration is an, is a, is a, is a administration that wants to apply rules, but you're applying rules to people or residents, especially homeowners, when the Pontiac is consists of maybe, maybe 40% homeowners with no communication. Ordinance are put in place, is it put in place for the administration to enforce, or is it put in place to communicate? Changes is not being put out there. One thing that the mayor did address this month in May, he will send a newsletter, and that's fine and good, but what do you do about your past description within the year and a half of administration that you've been here? Residents, homeowners are not trying to fight with you guys, they actually trying to work with you, but you have to respect them and work with them as well. Build-up frustration is there, not just with residents, but it's with the tenants and the landlords that have these tenants here that's destroying properties that homeowners work so hard to have. There are streets, there are communities. So based on that, look at the ordinance and apply that. Make more, and I'm done, but make more, please look at the landlords and tenants more closely.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Mr. Chuck Johnson, what item?
Number three.
Okay.
I certainly agree with Ms. Clark. Her comments there, right on. I'm reminded about a year or so ago, I remember a newscast talked about the bins, the so-called bins where you donate, donation bins. You know, the stuff that's put in those bins that are allocated for people who can get use of it was not, it was not going to those individuals. What happened was it kind of died off in the makeup of it all, and then there was an individual in Detroit that was going around to all these bins and emptying them out and taking the stuff back to his warehouse, washing the clothes or whatever it may be, utilizing, and then put them into a second-hand store that he and his wife own. Now, this is a newscast that I heard. So I'm thinking that the city of Pontiac should just abolish these donation bins, because they're not being used for the purposes intended, and they're a blight. Individuals get into them, they dig through, they throw stuff on the ground, and now what do you have? It's a blight. Further, along with Mrs. Clark's comment, I think the citizens of Pontiac is being blindsided with this whole issue, because there's an avenue that the people of Pontiac who needs the use of a bin or whatever, they should have the opportunity on their property to put some kind of, maybe, maybe go out here on Dixie Highway and buy one of these nice sheds that are built nice and they look good, and you enhance that shed with arborvitae plants, stuff that makes it look good on the property. I think the city should have looked at that avenue and gave the citizens an opportunity to buy something like that, rather than to say, "Hey, you're going to pay the city $500 a month just to have this box sitting in the yard." It is not, it's not fair. And I think you should revisit it and then have a town hall on this and have the people come out so that they can talk about it. I certainly believe that there's an avenue that the folk in Pontiac needs the opportunity to do something else aside from having the pod sitting in their yard. I can go on and on, but thank you for the extra second, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Ms. Gloria Miller, what item?
First, I want to address to all my home-timers, I've been here all my life. So we know how we do it in Pontiac. Growing up as a kid on the east side, we had people that come, work at their yard, they did their cars. But now it's to a extent where it's all in, all on the lawn and everywhere else. And I brought that up to say this, the pot, I don't want anyone to, last week, to misinterpret me. I have, for the last 20-some years, been a big advocate for cleanup Pontiac. I've got enough, my backpack enough to know that I cleaned enough of it to know. But you're going after pots, and you need to be going after, just not homeowners, even the businesses, they got the same thing. These people parking in their yards on the lawn, working businesses out of a residential neighborhood. I know this, because I was on the council, and I got a lot of issues still present with this, and they still calling me, that's why I'm still standing here, because they are angry. They pay a lot of money for their homes, and you got all these nice homes, and then you go and look at somebody, which you can tell who knew in the neighborhood, because I keep seeing this at this podium. Everybody in this city knows somebody that knows somebody. When I get out of this room, somebody knows somebody that I know. That's how we do, we used to do here. So I said what I said about the cars longer ago when I grew up, yes, they did it, but it was respect, they did it all over the place. It's total disrespect. And so, while you worried about a pot, and Mr. Carrington, you're correct. Your district over there, that Glenwood Plaza, you- Your district over there, that Glenwood Plaza, you got all that trash and debris, rats and everything out there. I pass that a day, I pass that almost every day now. You have a problem. You driftly do. I feel for you. I've been there. But you got to go after these businesses and everybody. You got to make it equal. You got to be for the same, because right now, the biggest problem we got right now is businesses working out of residential neighborhoods. Get that stuff out of here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. That concludes Agenda Address.
Thank you, Pro Tem Carrington. We are at item three on the agenda. At last week's city council meeting, it was moved and seconded for the second reading of this zoning text amendment, so it's actively before us since it was postponed for one week. This is for mixed-use district language updates, zoning text amendment regulating donation bins, and zoning text amendment regulating container pods. This was looked at even further at this week's Economic Development Housing and Planning Subcommittee Meeting, and staff has prepared some prospective amendments for us to consider that speak to some of the items raised by city council members at the previous week's meeting. So I want to give the floor to the mayor and administration for initial updates before we deliberate further and sink our teeth into some potential amendments. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Council President. I want to just amplify your point. We did hear council feedback last week. There were some proposed amendments included in your packet on Friday. Upon further conversations with the city's attorney, those proposed amendments have been refined further to try to eliminate any loopholes and prevent any abuse. So I'll allow Manager Yandrick to get into that. But I do want to, if I may, Mr. President, try to answer some of the questions from the audience that have come up during Agenda Address relating to this overall agenda item. So first of all, I know we had a question about the MUD ordinance, the mixed-use district ordinance, and in particular, the possible implications for the lakeside housing redevelopment, the shores of Crystal Lake, as well as the golf course. So just like we've seen with the old Mark Twain school, where we've tried to be proactive in having town halls about that, we had a number of town halls last summer about the proposed redevelopment of the lakeside housing complex into the shores at Crystal Lake. And so we had two town halls about that, one at the Bowen Center and one at the Center Point Marriott. So we're certainly trying to be every bit as transparent with all the developments in the community. That development is a development where the MUD zoning approach might apply. There certainly have been some conversations about that with the planning division. In terms of the golf course, I don't know who the new owner is. I don't even know for sure that they've closed on that yet, but I understand that there's some interested buyer. I have not had any conversations with that buyer. I have no idea what they might be looking for in terms of zoning. Most, the vast majority of the golf courses, I understand it, is zoned R1 for single-family homes. There's, I think, a smaller portion that's zoned R3 for apartments and another portion that may be zoned commercial, but I have no idea what that purchaser may be looking at in terms of any zoning request. I haven't had any communications with them, and to my knowledge, staff hasn't had any communications with them either. In terms of the pods, I think we all agree, including all the speakers, that we have a serious blight challenge in the community that needs to be addressed. And in my view, that's not an either-or approach. It's not, hey, you have to either address cars parked on yards, or you have to address pods. We can do both. And I know that when members of the public contact me with concerns about blight, I immediately report that to code enforcement, and I know code enforcement does immediately investigate those concerns. In terms of pods, that is a form of blight that people have expressed serious concern about. We certainly allow and encourage people to put up sheds and that sort of thing in their backyard as an alternative to pods. So this, this really doesn't have much to do with pods, excuse me, with sheds at all. Sheds are permanent, long-term structures, and there's already a process in place to apply for a permit to put a shed in somebody's backyard. What we're really talking about now is temporary pods or temporary storage facilities that are not anchored to the ground, that are not designed in any way, shape, or form to be permanent, and we're trying to put clear policies in place, not just in regard to homeowners, but especially in regard to commercial establishments and businesses. We agree that what's good for the goose is good for the gander, and anything that we do regarding homeowners goes twice at least for businesses and commercial establishments. So that's really the entire purpose here, is to put clear guidelines in place that are enforceable, that are clear, and that we can communicate to residents. I just want to be clear, as I said at the end of the meeting last week, that the, the one resident who has spoken, we did communicate with her for months before commencing enforcement actions. So this is not about us not communicating with residents. We go above and beyond in terms of communicating with residents, and in the past, the city has bent over backwards to give residents opportunities to address the blight and to address the violations before tickets are issued. This is about cleaning up the ordinances and making sure that we have an enforceable ordinance with enforceable language. And I'll just also touch on the bin issue, the donation bin issue, because we very much agree that these bins are abused. They're abused for purposes that are not what the people oftentimes, not always, but they're oftentimes abused by people who put out these bins and use the donated items for purposes other than what those donating those items believe they're going to be used for. And it was our, our first instinct to try to ban and prohibit these bins altogether in the city. But there is a court decision at the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals, which is the federal Court of Appeals that governs Michigan, that suggests that this is a form of free speech which cannot be outright prohibited. And that's why we've brought forward these regulations to try to better police bins in a way that's sensible and meaningful. So that's the background for the purpose of these revisions to the city's ordinance, and I hope that answers the questions that were offered tonight. And with that, Manager Yandrick, why don't you get into the proposed amendments?
Good evening, mayor, members of council. I have a very brief presentation. In the past weeks during our readings, I've gone through the entirety of the ordinances. I'm just going to focus on the motions tonight that were reflective of last week's conversation. So if there's any other questions, I do have the other slides in the bullpen if need be. So again, there are three buckets of standards, and as it was requested last week, the MUD standards is mixed-use district. That's not to say this isn't, this is a mixed-use development, but the formal name of this is a mixed-use district. And I just wanted to clarify from the speakers' questions last week that this is an existing zoning district within the city zoning code, and we are just making some modifications to the process for that. So it is a mixed-use district. It stands as a mixed-use development, but mixed-use district is the official title. Tonight is the second reading. So the first motion in front of you, and you, council has a red line copy, is having to do with donation bins. And so, city council should consider that the city in front of you will waive the application fee if the applicant provides documentation that it's a registered 501(c)(3) charitable organization. The applicant must provide proof of ownership of real property and the donation box in the form of a recorded deed and affidavit. The intent of this is to encourage charitable donations to charitable organizations that are located within the city of Pontiac, which maintain their property and contribute to the health, safety, welfare, and residence of the city. So this is the summary points of this motion. The legislation is highlighted in red within your, within your packet, and it's listed on the motion sheet. Number two is the container pods, and this is...
How about, if you're, if you're comfortable with it, how about we handle it amendment by amendment?
Sure.
Okay, so if you, we're talking about donation bins, and this is prompted in part Councilman James flagged last week that there are organizations in our city that rightfully would want to use their own property and have a track record of responsibly using their property to receive donated items that they then utilize literally on site, and that they would still be required to keep cleanliness, keep, keep order, but that it wouldn't have to go through the, the fee or the permit cost, if you will, to have an operated donation bin. She explicitly gave Oakland Hope as the example on Walton Boulevard, so inevitably there could or already is others, but that's one as a frame of reference for our conversation last week. So, Manager Yandrick, the proposed amendment would facilitate an entity, a nonprofit entity, to be able to have a donation bin on their own premises for the purposes of advancing their, their nonprofit's charitable mission.
Yep, and they would be, be able to do that, and we would be waiving the application fee. So they, so that, that would be the exception given for the nonprofit.
All right. So is there a motion to, it's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, and is there a second for this particular amendment regarding donation bins?
I second.
Okay. It has been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by Councilwoman James, that we amend the proposal before us to insert this language. I want to make sure.
Page 16.
Yep, so number four, waiver of permit fee. The city will waive the permit fee if the applicant can provide the following. One, documentation showing that the organization is a registered 501(c)(3) charitable organization as defined by the Internal Revenue Service. Two, proof of ownership of both the proposed donation boxes and the real property on which the donation box is proposed to be located, as well as documentation showing that the charitable organization intends to utilize the items donated to benefit the charitable purpose for which the organization was organized. Proof of ownership of the real property must be in the form of a property deed recorded with the Oakland County Register of Deeds. Proof of ownership of the donation box can come in the form of an affidavit executed by the owner of the donation box. Similarly, documentation of intent can come in the form of an affidavit executed by the owner of the donation box and real property. And that was all A. So it was A, subitem one and two, and now B, under four, for waiver of permit fee reads. The intent of this waiver provision is to encourage charitable donations to charitable organizations located within the city of Pontiac, which regularly maintain their property and contribute to the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the city. So that is the change that has been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilwoman James, and so now we're debating this specific section. Do we want to add this language or not? Pro Tem Carrington.
Yes, thank you, President McGinnis. I just want to ask a question concerning, how do you determine regular maintenance of property and contribute to the health, safety, and welfare of residents of the city? That's a little broad with any specifications.
I'd be happy to answer that. So that's really the intention of why these rules are there, and it kind of strengthens it if there's ever a legal challenge of why these rules are there. We're not determining that necessarily within an application itself. It's pretty cut and dry if they meet the criteria of being a 501(c)(3) organization, provide the affidavit, proof of ownership, and have not had, you know, significant issues with maintenance, violations of, of the ordinance.
So that means each application, you're going to check the violation list for these particular organizations, because I can take you through the sixth district and I can show you all the violations.
Yep.
I'm just saying, me personally, I think that if these organizations were in other cities, they wouldn't even be, they wouldn't be no, we wouldn't be arguing whether a nonprofit or a business. I think they're both of the same. These nonprofits are actually businesses that get free donations that provide a service. So they run as a corporation. So for me, I would definitely not like to see this go into the ordinance.
Okay, and now there is no ordinance on the books for the city about donation bins. Essentially, it's...
Yeah.
There's nothing that we're, so anything we're doing is adding new, and what we're saying is what we're adding new, what we're, the teeth we're adding for donation bins, we're determining whether or not we want to create this option for a nonprofit on their own property to collect for their advancing their nonprofit.
And anyone would be able to apply, this would, anyone would be able to apply for a donation bin. This caveat in this motion really waives the fee specifically for the nonprofits. So that's what this does.
And there's other language that speaks about what can lead to revocation of the bin or violation.
That is correct.
So that one sentence about the intent isn't the only thing doing the heavy lifting about whether it can stay or go. It's, it's helping fortify our legal standing to say what the intent is for us to create this option.
Absolutely.
Okay. Other discussion, Councilwoman James.
You know, and again, 99% of the problem are these bins on property that they don't, the owner of the bin does not own the property. If we really look at the problem, 99%, we're dealing with people who just plot these bins everywhere throughout the city. They don't maintain them, you know, it's not on their property. You are not looking at apples and apples when you're looking at a person that can just plop a bin, and this is my house. You know, this is my property, this is my business. So I definitely think this is an appropriate step to take. We're trying to fix a problem, but we're not trying to penalize people who are in legitimate work, you know, to, that benefits our community. So I, I agree with it. I agree with the changes that have been made. I agree with the, the rest of the ordinance, the requirements, the registration, the fees, everything, but I just felt that if it's on their property, it's integral to their business, they are maintaining it. I don't think, I think they need to be exempt from this, and this is what this does.
Specifically, the fee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Goodman.
So that's a very specific clarifying question. So the waiver of the permit fee would be if the applicant could provide both or either-or?
Both.
So they say to get the waiver, they would have to not only essentially own the bin, but also own the property that the bin is on.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Further discussion on this specific amendment. So again, this is inserting language into the proposed ordinance language, waiver of permit fee. Is everyone clear on what's before us? Hearing no further discussion, speakers list on this specific amendment is exhausted. Roll call, Clerk Doyle on adoption of this proposed amendment specifically adding the language about waiver of permit fee regarding donation bins. Clerk Doyle.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
No.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Five yays, one nay.
That motion carries, that specific amendment passes, so that language is now in, in terms of the main motion. We are back to the main motion with the anticipation that we're going to sink our teeth into the next amendment.
Absolutely. So the next item is container pods. I just wanted to provide some summary points. This is located on page 20 of your red line document. From last week, staff has clarified language to require the homeowner or applicant to apply on a prescribed form. I want to delineate, this is not a zoning application. This is not, this just acknowledges that they are placing a container pod. It would need to be signed approval from the planning division before installation. We did also clarify that the clock starts the day the pod is installed, and even though this requires the, this approval prior to that, we did want to ensure that no one was delaying just to allow for an extension. And we also made the change from a once in, from a once a year to once in a 12-month rolling period. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions you may have, so.
First and foremost, is any city council member interested in making this motion? Would they like to add this language?
Make the motion, support, he support.
Okay, so it's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Goodman, that in section 4.105 pods, we'd be adding language B permitted usage. The use of pods for storage is prohibited within the city of Pontiac for any period longer than 30 days in a 12-month period. In the event a resident would like to utilize a pod for storage, they must submit an application on a prescribed form to the city planner's office to notify the city of the intended use of a pod for a period of no longer than 30 days prior to the installation of the pod. The application must be signed by a member of the planning division before installation of the pod. The first 30-day period shall begin upon the installation of the pod by the resident. The first thirty-day period shall begin upon the installation of the pod by the resident. Residents are entitled to seek a maximum of two extensions from the initial thirty-day approval. In order to seek an extension of the initial approval, a resident must provide proof of an open building permit to substantiate the need for additional storage due to an ongoing construction project. In no circumstances can any resident utilize a pod for a period longer than ninety days in one twelve-month period." So that's the amendment that's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilwoman Goodman. Was there anything further staff wanted to raise about this specific amendment?
I do not. I think these clarifications makes it easier for staff to administer this regulation going forward. Thank you.
All right, deliberation on this specific item. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Goodman.
Is there a fee associated with applying for the pods or the extensions?
There is not.
Thank you. Councilman Parker, followed by Councilwoman James.
Just for clarification, you're talking about the pods, the white things, that pod on the side, and not the little metal containers that look like shipping containers, correct?
These container pods are like shipping containers, so they're, both would qualify under this.
So the shipping containers and the pods would qualify?
Yep, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman James is next on the speaker list, but just to put a finer point on that. So this ordinance language addresses storage containers and what are colloquially known as pods.
That is correct.
And it is applicable to both residential, commercial, and industrial facilities?
That is correct.
Okay, so regardless of zoning designation, regardless of land use, if you're plopping a pod or a storage container, there is the process that we are seeking to create.
That is correct.
And this is mainly new language? There is some language in some of the governing documents of the city, but it's a little hazy, and this helps tighten it and provide clarity for residents, businesses, prospective investors alike.
So there's, previous to this, what's currently in the code is an interpretation of our accessory structure, rules and regulations of making sure that the structure is compatible with the existing principal structure. There's some vaguities in the way that that's interpreted, and so this is intentional in how it's worded and being very specific, so.
And then useful for residents and business owners, so they can see it for themselves.
Absolutely.
Councilwoman James.
Yeah, I like the new part is what's in red.
Correct.
Yeah, this clarifies a lot for me, because basically, the average use of these, these are temporary storage containers. The average use of these containers, if people are moving, you know, from one place to another, they store their stuff in a pod, you know, they have it shipped to where they're going to move to, it sits there for a day or whatever, they take their stuff out, it goes away. So this doesn't affect the average use of these pods, that, you know, I need it for a few days, I'm going to load some stuff up, and it's out of there within three days. So what this says is, this, the use of pods for storage, which is a different animal altogether. And so am I right in saying that this is controlling the use of these pods? If a person knows when they order it, that they are going to have that pod on their property for X number of weeks or months, or in those cases, they would need to register that, you know, they would need to register that pod.
Absolutely. It really sets the expectation for the homeowner or the property owner to know that timeline.
Yeah, well, that makes sense, I.
Mayor Grimaldi.
Well, thank you. The comment of Councilman Parker made me think, and I don't want to over-engineer this, but it's a question maybe for you, Manager Yandrick, or the attorney as well, which is, if we want this to apply to all storage containers, maybe we should make that clear, because I think pods is a brand name, actually.
Well, it's utilized as an acronym as well.
This has been discussed, I would like Morgan from the Kelly Firm to go into a little bit more detail about this, thank you.
Good evening, Council. That is correct. So pods is a type of these storage containers that is typically seen in our area. That being said, we do have a definition section under this ordinance, which defines what a pod is. It's actually before the section that you guys were just reading, and it defines a pod as any storage container that is placed on a property for the purpose of storage, loading, and/or unloading furniture, clothing, or other personal or household belongings other than donation boxes, as defined in the previous section. So we were aware that pods is like Kleenex, a name brand. It's identifiable, that's the reason that we used it. That being said, we did include a definition in this ordinance section to make sure that that was not an issue.
Got it, that makes sense, thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Any further discussion on this specific amendment before us? Again, it is in section 4.105 pods, letter B permitted usage adds the language that was specified. Is there any further discussion or clarification? And I'm voting, remembering a pod that stayed on Court Street across from my dad's house when I lived there for many, many years. I don't know what the deal was. Clerk Doyle.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
All right, so that clarifying language for permitted usage, that amendment carries and is now before us in that main overall motion before us. We're back at that main motion with a final amendment with language that's before us. We can certainly consider more that can come from the floor, but we give the floor to staff to queue up the final item in terms of mixed-use districts.
Okay. So the last item has to do with childcare daycare centers. This was discussed last week. And just for some context, an applicant through this process, if it were approved, would rezone a property to MUD. They would be required to get the zoning map amendment approved by city council. They would also need to get a development agreement approved by city council, and as part of that development agreement, there are certain requirements that may be a part of that negotiation that is approved in a development agreement. And so while we were looking at these two sections up here, having to do with the drop-off and pickup area being adjacent to the main building entrance, located off of a public street, and parking access lane shall be a sufficient size as to not create congestion within the public roadway, we added unless otherwise stated in the development agreement approved by city council. So normally, this would be done by planning commission, but this wording was added last week by our attorney based on the discussion with council. So, and regarding the outdoor play area of at least five hundred square feet, and that said play area shall not be located within the front yard setback unless otherwise stated in the development agreement approved by city council. This gives flexibility in case some alternatives are desired for a specific development. It does not bind or tie, it just provides some additional options when going through with a rezoning, so. I apologize, I believe these items are located on page nine, they're not redlined, but they're located under number two and three, under O, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Is there a motion from a city council member? It's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by Councilwoman Goodman, to amend the motion before us to change the language for section 3.704, section O subsection two, and section O subsection three, subsection two reads, "A separate drop-off and pickup area shall be provided adjacent to the main building entrance, located off a public street, and the parking access lane, and shall be of sufficient size so as to not, so as not to create congestion on the site or within a public roadway unless otherwise stated in the development agreement approved by city council." Period. Subsection C would read, "There shall be an outdoor play area of at least five hundred square feet provided on the premises." Period. Said play area shall not be located within the front setback unless otherwise stated in the development agreement approved by city council." Period. So that's what we're now debating, this specific language proposal. Pro Tem Carrington flagged, in terms of it initially had said, "Planning commission," and this speaks to, you know, when the development agreements coming before city council, that's the time where this unique feature, if this is applicable for a mixed-use district and that's in the best interest of the city, that's the time for that option to be considered. So it incorporated that feedback from Pro Tem Carrington. This is what we're discussing, any feedback or questions? All right, hearing no further discussion, speakers list exhausted. Roll call, Clerk Doyle, on adoption of this specific amendment, making this the new language for the stated sections. Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
That motion carries, the amendment passes, and it's incorporated into the main overall motion. So now we're back to the main motion. Speakers list from deliberation on those who wish to speak to the proposed zoning text amendment and ordinance changes. Can you speak to why in the mixed-use district, section three, I don't want to misguide you, but there's a, previously, there had been language about final plan, and that the language proposed removes the reference to its approval. Upon finding that the, instead of final plan, it will now read, "Application," meets the criteria set forth in the intent of this section, the planning commission may recommend final plan approval to the city council. Is that just clarifying that it's not a final plan until the application is acted upon? Okay, so it becomes a final plan, once the application is recommended by planning commission, that final plan approval then comes to city council. Any further discussion on the main motion before us? So, this is a zoning text amendment for mixed-use district language updates, including zoning text amendment regulating donation bins and zoning text amendment regulating container pods. I think that the mixed-use district language is solid, because what it means, right now in Pontiac, we have two existing mixed-use districts. On our books, mixed-use districts can exist in our city, but the language is a little outdated that sort of governs or rules what can happen with that. What, if this passes, it'll add more language and more teeth in terms of green space required in a mixed-use development, buffer and barrier between a residential area and an industrial area. The two existing mixed-use district zoning in our city, one is, was the former Clinton Valley Center. So that state psychiatric institution, hundreds of acres. When that was demolished, the forefathers of the city twenty-plus years ago, there was a zoning designated, making that a mixed-use district, with the intention that it takes a very large site and imagines and repurposes it. The other example existing right now in our city is the M1 concourse. And so that, of course, is the former General Motors facility, very vast, that was demolished by the entity that was handling the bankruptcy for General Motors. And then when our city forefathers before us were determining what that large, unique site can be, that it was a mixed-use district, which creates more potential safeguards versus your zoned commercial, your zoned industrial, your zoned residential of this type, it's saying they can all be sort of in this larger package, but here's some more requirements and thresholds. And unfortunately, not always are those higher thresholds done when the development agreement comes to the city. So what we're trying to say is make it for future city leaders, we're adding more requirements, not leaving it to chance on what those development agreements would have to decide. Still has to go through the planning commission process, the public hearing process, two readings here at the city council. There can be no, beyond those two I just mentioned, there won't be any new mixed-use districts unless and until it comes through that. And we want to know if that ever comes, that we've got more clear requirements to protect the residents and property owners that are here right now. The second item, donation bins. Right now, it's the wild, wild west in Pontiac when it comes to donation bins, there are no regulations. And this now adds the regulations. And what it says if this is adopted is that if somebody wants to plop a donation bin down and they've got permission from a property owner, you could do it in Pontiac, but you got to register it, you got to register it each year, you got to pay a fee each year, you got to give us who you are, contact information that's legit, and we can reach you, so that way, if it's a mess, if it's not in the standards that our neighborhoods and corridors deserve, and we are now requiring, that we can follow up, we could take action, we can easily, more easily evict those bad actor donation bins. But also, it inevitably may have an impact where there will be less of them, because the bad actors don't want to give their information, don't want to pay a few hundred bucks a year, don't want to be on the hook and legitimate. So we are adding these new regulations for the donation bins, but we have created the opportunity where that financial burden will not be placed if it's a nonprofit can demonstrate that they're doing it to advance their nonprofit on the site that they themselves control and will maintain. And so finally, it's about the temporary storage containers in our city. Right now, there are vague requirements that aren't easily enforced, and it's part of the reason why there have been, in our neighborhoods and at businesses, both, both incidents, at businesses and residential properties, where some of these essentially temporary storage containers that are meant for shipping or meant for transporting are being used as permanent storage. And so we want to provide more clarity for the residents, the business owners, and the staff, who are then have to make it work, make it viable, that this creates a process. And as Councilman Goodman flagged, we aren't looking to add a financial burden on that, we're just looking to make it so that neighborhoods and businesses cannot be relying on temporary storage for forever storage. And there's no resolution for residents that are trying to get that addressed if it is excessive. We're looking at the excessive side of it. So that's my understanding of what we're considering. It deals with mixed-use district zoning, donation bins, and temporary storage containers in our city. Any final discussion on the speakers list? Hearing nothing further, roll call Clerk Doyle on the adoption of the zoning text amendment for mixed-use district language updates and zoning text amendment regulating donation bins and zoning text amendment regulating container pods.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
That motion carries, so this will be added to the, essentially, the policies that govern the city of Pontiac. Can the administration provide the public and city council, what's the ratification timeframe on that, in terms of when does the ordinance go into effect, clerk and staff?
Is it thirty days for adoption of an ordinance?
Was there an ordinance timeframe put in there? If not?
There was not.
Then it's ten days.
Ten days, okay.
Okay, so this goes into effect ten days from adoption? We, I just want to make sure that that was clear. Some ordinances have a sixty-day window, some have a forty-five-day window, that in ten days, this becomes the law of the land of Pontiac. Okay, all right. We are now at item number four. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the Traffic and Safety Control Systems, Inc., for parking, kiosk repair, and monthly maintenance? Moved by Carrington, support. It's been moved by Pro Tem Carrington and seconded by Councilwoman Parker. This motion is now before us. We give the floor to the mayor and administration for rationale.
Thank you, Mr. President. This has been a long time coming. Several years back, the city effectively stopped enforcing any parking meters in town, due in part because the city had been relying on a private contractor for that function, and that private contractor decided it was no longer profitable to do the work. We have been looking at how best to tackle this issue since fairly early on in coming into office, and initially, we considered bringing that contractor back on board, but for a variety of reasons, we really didn't think that made sense. And so instead of that, we are looking at a contract to get these parking devices, the kiosks, back up in working order and to maintain them. But in terms of the enforcement itself, that we are proposing will be done by city employees, as is the case in most communities. Those employees are budgeted for in the proposed budget for the upcoming fiscal year that starts July first. In the interim, we will In the interim, we will be providing, during the month of June, some code enforcement inspectors to make sure that we're starting to get the word out about the impending parking enforcement. But what's before council tonight is just the contract to restore the functioning of the parking kiosks, the parking devices in our downtown. And we anticipate that we should be able to have those back up and operating by the end of this month, by the end of May. During the month of June, rather than giving those parking an immediate shock to their system of getting tickets, instead, during the month of June, it'll be a probationary period, if you will, where we will get the word out about the fact that enforcement is coming beginning July 1st. We will try to put leaflets on cars downtown that have not used the kiosks to say, hey, we're giving you until July 1st to adjust to this new reality. So we'll try to give these sort of, if you will, faux tickets to cars during the month of June to put them on notice that, hey, beginning July 1st, this would have been a real ticket. But we've got to get these parking meters up and operating. I always say that the whole purpose of parking meters is not to generate revenue, it's to prevent employees and residents from parking there all day long and taking up the most convenient parking that is supposed to be for customers and patrons who need to run in and out of restaurants or stores, you know, and so they really should only be there for an hour or two for most purposes. So that's the purpose of parking meters, is to prevent people from hogging these spaces all day long, thereby crowding out the customers and patrons who are so crucial to supporting the bars, restaurants, retailers, that make any downtown vibrant. And with that, I'd like to invite our economic development manager, Deborah Younger, to the podium. She's been doing an amazing job of quarterbacking this whole process, which has not been easy. So I appreciate all of your hard work, Manager Younger.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Manager Younger.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm here to answer any questions, I think the mayor adequately described where we are, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
First on the speakers list is Councilman Rutherford, I had a quick, clear, fine question though, can you just offer the rationale for why this, this particular entity to do this?
Yes, basically, there are only a few people left that can service at all. It took me over two months to even get keys made. There, these are close to obsolete, but we believe we can repair them. They were installed in 2014. It's a brand that's no longer being used in most downtown parking systems, so we had to sole-source it to this entity, who in fact could make, could get the parts, order the parts, and/or make parts. So what we hope to do is, is, there are about fifteen kiosks. We don't think that we're going to be able to salvage them all. What we're going to try to do is take parts from some to put into others to make them operational. The goal is to get to twelve kiosks, but there's no guarantee we'll have twelve. We'll look at how we strategically place them, because the next piece of legislation I'll be bringing to you next week is for a mobile app. And the mobile app will link to the kiosks, so you can either pay in a kiosk, or you can pay mobily. And the two systems, these are one of the two systems that actually work together. So we actually had to find a kiosk servicer who could work with a mobile app as well. And because ours is so old, it limited the, the sources that we could actually utilize.
Thank you, Councilman Rutherford.
Thank you, Ms. Younger, first of all, thank you for doing this. Downtown has been begging for parking and accountability, so I'm appreciative of all your hard work. My question is simple, who's going to be writing the tickets? And how are we actually going to get the revenue when you guys write the tickets? Because in the past, 50th District was receiving the revenue, and so I want to know, are we having our sheriffs do it, or are we having traffic stop people, what we're doing?
We're hiring employees who will actually be city employees. But the other reason that we chose the mobile application is they are one of the few sources that directly sends the tickets directly to the court and monitors and provides us reports, so we will be able to collect that revenue. They have a direct enforcement piece that goes directly to the courts. So we will be able to, you know, track it and get our money from the courts as it is in fact paid. And part of their due diligence is they receive a fee off of the parking violation, so it's in their best interest to track it as well. So we will have staff who actually issue the tickets violations. They'll have handheld apps that is provided by the software company that provides the, the mobile app. Again, they will link to the kiosks, and they'll, they'll be able to issue tickets right on the spot. The tickets will be recorded in the app, the app automatically generates a letter if they don't pay it immediately. And then, if that doesn't happen, it goes to the courts. They can pay at the treasurer's office here, or they can pay to, they can pay online, or of course, they can pay to the courts.
Okay, and my follow-up question is, there are certain locations that have their property on top of parking spaces, if you know what I'm familiar with. How are we going to deal with that? Because we have to count those individuals, because there's such a parking need in downtown.
Right, we're, we're working with the property owners, and it's, part of it's going to be signage. As we work with this, we're also working with, trying to work with the commercial parking lot owners, because as you know, we don't own any lots, all we own is on-street. So we're trying to do both a carrot and a stick. We'll provide you with this free app, the signage, and you can be part of our system. If you don't, that's your choice. There are a couple who already have apps that they use, and that's fine. But one of our concerns is, is that the safety, the appearance of your parking lot. So we're going to step up code enforcement, you know, these unpaved lots that are unsafe and unhealthy, we're going to start enforcing more heavily, so.
And my follow-up is just about intimate domain in regards to Lot 9. What is the progress on that, I yield to the mayor of that?
You've asked about Lot 9?
Yes.
Well, we have not fully formulated a legal strategy in that regard, and I would encourage us, if we want to talk about a legal strategy, that we do so in closed session.
Okay, thank you, that was it.
Pro Tem Carrington, then Councilman Parker.
Actually, I was, McGinnis, she did, she actually answered everything I was going to ask her. But I don't know if I should vote on this, since I'd be punishing myself of being downtown.
Well, you know the parking czar, so I don't know.
I like free parking myself. It keeps me in Pontiac instead of going to Royal Oak now.
Well.
Just saying.
I'm just saying.
You certainly are able to cast a vote, just like you are, you are governed by not letting your grass grow long, or not host a donation bin on your, your property. You, you are bounding yourself, binding yourself to the requirements of everyone else as well. Councilman Parker?
Thank you, so only one question I have, as you was talking about the, the condition of the existing parking meters, is there some plan to, as you're wrangling and jerry-rigging those that can work, is there a plan to replace the ones that aren't not working?
Not at this time, they're pretty expensive. The new ones average between fifteen, the lowest I got was like $12,000 for one kiosk. So I think as we move to mobile apps, that certainly we should have some kiosks, because there are some citizens who, you know, do not like technology, and we're going to place those strategically. But I don't think, right now, my goal is to get parking going. As we move forward, we might consider looking at, at new kiosks, but they are super expensive. And right now, I think we can salvage some of the existing ones. And again, with the combination of spray, putting the kiosks strategically along the main quarters, and having the mobile app available and appropriate signage, that we should be able to, in fact, meet our objective, which is regulating parking, ensuring that businesses enjoy parking spaces that are available to their customers.
Thank you. Council, oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Goodman, followed by Councilman James.
Is there an existing fee schedule for the violations of someone were to get a, a parking ticket?
We're, we're working with them on that, and right, at this point, there is no ordinance that determines. In the past, it was so low that people actually were like, I'll pay the ticket, which most of the time wasn't collected. So we're prob, we're looking at typically what other surrounding cities have done, which averages between $25 and $45 for a ticket.
And so with that, I, I think, I would like council, and specifically me, to be a part of that process, and trying to make sure that that is like the most equitable fees schedule, at least between our residents, and making sure that, you know, we're doing what we can to make sure that people from Pontiac actually go to downtown, while enforcing heavily on the other people who are obviously taking up good space.
Okay, and, and just to clarify, we're looking at a dollar thirty an hour, okay? Which is typical in surrounding cities. The thirty cents is the fee, the service fee, but a dollar an hour, which is pretty, you know, Royal Oak and others charge a little bit more, Detroit charges a dollar thirty, and they charge forty-five for tickets, I know, because I've got three right now on my dashboard.
I currently have one. But, so, but with that, like, I, acknowledging that forty-five dollars to you and I is a very small amount, and, and I know that, like, some of the cities, like the city of Detroit, offer some of those breaks for their own residents when it comes to those tickets. I, again, just want to be a part of that discussion.
I heard your request, and I, I plan to honor it. I was just giving you some back additional information.
Absolutely, I really appreciate it. And so with that, I do want to follow up, because like, that kind of does help us with, like, so, in terms of enforcement, it would be the, the city enforcing that. So that kind of does also, like, relate to being able to be more fine-tuned with how we're, you know, going about those fees, and making sure that we're doing it in a way that is equitable. The one thing I do want to highlight is, most people in the state of Pontiac, especially who come here, like, expect free parking from the city at this point, to Pro Tem's point. And I know that we were mentioning about possibly, you know, having that waiver period up until July 1st. However, is there any way that is actually reasonable for, for the city, or whatever entity to do it, to where we have a waiver for the initial ticket? Because there are a lot of people who may not come here frequently enough to know that. So being able to say, hey, you've been coming here for three years, and we haven't had paid parking, this is your one free shot, and after this, you will get the full amount. That way, for people who, whether they be city residents, that will be their, their free time, but also people who do not regularly come to park downtown, this would be their chance to have that initial, like, hey, this is your free shot, and now you know that we have paid parking.
You want to yield?
Yes.
All right, he's yielding to Mayor Grimaldi.
You know, we're, we're certainly open to it, I mean, again, the, the point here is, is not to be punitive, and it's also not, as I said, to generate revenue for the city. There's, there's a reason why it's economic development manager, Deborah Younger, who's handling this, and not code enforcement or, or some other entity, because this really is about economic development. It's about trying to make sure that there are spots on the street that are convenient for customers and patrons, and that are open from time to time. I think we've all been in downtown at times, where, yeah, it's, it's great if you get a spot, you can park there for free, but try finding a spot. And there are times when it's almost impossible to easily or quickly find a spot downtown. And so that's really what this is designed to ensure, is that cars are circulating, and there are more often, more convenient parking spots actually available. So whatever we think can, can accomplish that, without being punitive, without being unfair, without giving people a bad experience in our downtown, which is the last thing we want, we're open to. So we can certainly talk more offline. Obviously, tonight isn't about the actual enforcement policies, but just about the contract to get the machines up and running.
Absolutely.
Councilman James, for a first time, followed by Councilman Rutherford.
Yeah, on the, the, how many kiosks did you say, kiosks?
Kiosks, there's fifteen existing. This contract anticipates twelve being salvaged. However, if it doesn't, of course, we won't spend the full amount. And because we don't know how much parts and other things are, we, we hope to get to twelve, but we may not be able to, given the state of our current ones. So our goal is twelve, and it anticipates repairing twelve and getting parts, but that may not be possible, and it also anticipates monthly servicing of whatever contracts we do are able to salvage.
If I remember correctly, each one of them, I'm assuming, you, you park, you, you go to the nearest one from where you park. How many cars can each, is there a limit to how many cars?
No.
Each one of the kiosks, so really, you know, if we, if we only had one, you could still go to that kiosk, because you have to put in your.
License plate.
Your license plate number. Okay, and then the other question is, not a question, but just a suggestion. It wouldn't be a bad idea for us to make a video, have our communications department make a short video how to use the kiosks downtown, and just really walk people through, because people want to be able to go downtown, you know, we're trying to build our downtown area. But technology can be a detriment to people if they're, if they don't understand how to use that technology. So it'd be good to just make a video that we show, you know, in the city hall, and, and just so people can know how, how you, you go about using that.
Sure, and the mobile app as well, because that's probably going to be, people are more used to the kiosks, so I think we could do both.
Yeah, okay.
Councilman Rutherford?
Okay, this is a two-part question, so I'm going to yield the second one to the mayor, but the first one's going to be to you. How many officers are we going to have working?
At this point, we're talking about three.
My question, I'm yielding to the mayor, is, we have a grant department. Have we had any of them try to find funding for the new kiosks? Because eventually, we're going to have to get rid of them. So have we been actively, or are, are we going to actively pursue funding to pay for the, you said it's, it's $12,000 per kiosk, so $150,000, $120,000?
Yeah, so the, the short answer is, no, not yet. But you're right, like, everything, like, literally every piece of equipment and every building that anybody in the history of the world has ever owned, they need to be replaced. And, and these may be more than most, the pieces of equipment are already in tough shape, as you've heard. So I think we do want to come up with a plan about replacement, and some of that may hinge on how much revenue the machines are generating. I'm guessing, just based on a lot of conversations I've had with our grants department director, that it would be tough to get grants for something like this, because it's, it's, I'm not saying it's impossible, but certainly from private foundations, they tend to gravitate towards things that are more rainbows and unicorns, and happy and positive, as opposed to day-to-day, basic city functioning. And so, we can certainly have that conversation, but I think it may, may be tough. But there may be some state or federal grants, or that may, that may be more applicable. My guess is that that would be a more likely place to look for grants than foundation funding. But we can certainly have that conversation. I think what we are hoping to move towards as a city is whenever we're buying equipment, or in this case, whenever we're operating a fund that generates revenue, trying to reserve some of that funding for replacement costs in the future.
Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion before us? So for those that are saying, why don't you just have parking meters? Well, dear neighbors, we did have parking meters, and in the state-implemented emergency manager era, they literally removed and sold them. I want to say they went to Mexico, so they still exist, so, but just in another. Oh, Milford, Milford, Michigan, okay. So, the, the more sort of basic or traditional, you know, put a coin in, that those were removed over a decade ago, these remaining kiosks are what replaced them. But, so I just want to give that context. It's also in that era that we lost such important and strategic parking lots, including the fabled Lot 9, that could have been very, very strategic for the community in terms of redeveloping the downtown, beautifying the downtown, not having insane parking costs downtown. So I'll pour one out for the parking lots and the parking meters. May they remain in our memory. All right, any further discussion on the motion before us? Hearing no further discussion, roll call on the adoption of the resolution to approve the Traffic and Safety Control Systems, Inc. for parking, kiosk repair, and monthly maintenance. Clerk Doyle.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
No for all those that don't want to pay parking downtown Pontiac.
Five yeas, one nay.
The spirited nay is overruled, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Is there? Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to?
So moved.
All right, so it's been moved by Rutherford and seconded by Parker. The resolution is to approve the execution of a grant agreement with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation for the Enhancement Grant Program Award in the amount of seven million, five hundred thousand dollars for the Meadow Street Extension and Clinton River Trail Expansion Project. It's been moved and seconded, so that item is now before us. We had a special presentation on the matter last week, and now we're pursuing the agreement with the state in terms of applying that money, making it happen. Mayor Grimaldi, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So this relates to the donation of about sixty-three acres of land to more than double the size of Murphy Park. That donation of land stemmed from the rezoning of some property behind United Wholesale Mortgage for purposes of a concrete plant. And as I've explained before, we're very excited about that donation of sixty-three acres of land because it puts us on track, we believe, to get out of our parks deficit that has prevented the city for twenty-plus years from receiving the vast majority of federal and state grants that are available for improving our parkland, which is one of the reasons why the city's parks are in such tough shape. So this granting of that parkland that was associated with the rezoning of the land is very, very important to the city's future and to the quality of life of our residents. As part of that rezoning of the land, United Wholesale Mortgage acquiesced to it, even though they weren't excited about the prospect of concrete trucks driving down roads by their complex and then driving on South Boulevard, because their lobbyists lobbied the State of Michigan Legislature to appropriate money for the purpose of building a separate road from the concrete plant out to Updike. That is, actually, has some benefit to the city because that way, the trucks are much less likely to end up on city roads like South Boulevard, and much more likely to end up on a county road, Updike, that the County Road Commission is responsible for maintaining instead of the city. And these concrete trucks are very heavy and damaging to roads. So that much is, is great, we're, we're enthused about that. We weren't involved in that lobbying effort, that was purely done by United Wholesale Mortgage's lobbyist. And to be honest with you, we were surprised at the sum that we ultimately received, which is more than the amount required to build that road. It's much more, actually, than the amount required to build that road. And the way that that legislation was defined, it must be used either for the road or for neighboring park improvements for that donated property. Now, for those of you thinking to yourself, as many of us have, well, we have a lot of urgent needs in this city, and it would be great to spend that seven point five million or much of it on other purposes. We agree with you. Well, we, you know, if we were given seven point five million dollars with no strings attached, this would not be our highest priority, I can assure you. But that's not what we're faced with. We're faced with an appropriation from the state, and that appropriation from the state has specific strings attached to it, and we have either the choice to spend it in accordance with those strings, which, by the way, will keep heavy trucks off of city roads and make dramatic improvements to parkland and allow us to extend the Clinton River Trail between Updike and Martin Luther King Boulevard, or the alternative is not to spend it on anything else in the city, but just to not spend it at all or give it back to the state. So we certainly want to make sure that we're spending it here in the city of Pontiac as opposed to sending it back to the state. I want to also note that the United Wholesale Mortgage's lobbyist is also currently very actively lobbying and helping us lobby for funding for the Martin Luther King Bridge repairs. And I am in regular contact with that lobbyist every week or two as we join forces to lobby for funding for the Martin Luther King Bridge, which is an extremely high priority request for us with the state of Michigan. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to our Grants Director, Alex Boringgesser, to get into more details about the specifics of this grant and the associated agreement.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually don't have much more to add. What you have before you is the agreement to, or is a resolution to authorize the mayor to execute the agreement related to the funds that he outlined. I think it's important to note that this is beyond just the bypass road, like he mentioned. This includes a connection of Meadow to Updike, Center Point repairs, Clinton River Trail Extension adjacent to the Meadow Extension, Clinton River Trail Extension up to N-59, and then construction and administrative and engineering costs. So you can see that in the agreement. It's pretty standard to form, and this will allow us to execute it and provide it to the Michigan, or to MEDC.
And first on the speaker's list is Councilman Rutherford, but just to clarify, so on this agreement, the performance schedule has an ending date of December 31st, 2025. So essentially, we're committing with the state that the project will be completed by the end of 2025, is that?
That is correct, and like I noted in my presentation last week, this is a project that will be let to, out, and the city won't necessarily manage all of the construction internally. So this is very similar to some of our other projects that we have let to other entities to manage.
And what's your expectation of when there will be more granular details about that hefty sum that could be used for the Clinton River Trail and Murphy Park? When should the city council and the community know more specific details about that?
Well, I, I can't answer that question just yet. I actually did not anticipate this agreement arriving as quickly as it did. As you probably noted from my special presentation last week, I expected this to take several more weeks to arrive, and it arrived right after my presentation. So I will check in with the folks at MEDC and set a clear timeline, and then provide that to you in writing or via subcommittee.
Okay. But I can tell you, in Exhibit A for the grantees budget for the Michigan Enhancement Grant Project Budget, I'm looking at trail infrastructure of four hundred and thirty thousand dollars and trail infrastructure of one point five million dollars, two separate categories. One's talking about extending up to N-59, that's the one point five million dollars, and then running along, parallel with Meadow, is four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So that we're talking about over two million buckaroos for benefiting Pontiac's east side with the trail and Murphy Park, which I think is beautiful. Councilman Rutherford.
So my other question is, can any of that money be used on the other side, Orchard Lake, or no?
Unfortunately, this money can only be spent in the way that it was submitted. There were really strong and clear guidelines about what we could submit an application for, and it had to be in a direct response to the language in the legislation. So we did our best to leave zero dollars on the table, which is our objective, and work in city projects that would benefit the public, but remained within the bounds of the legislation.
My follow-up question is, are we actively pursuing funds for that portion so that, you know how the trail ends at Bagley, so that it can actually keep going through, so that, that you don't have to go all the way around?
Yes, ma'am, we are.
Thank you.
That reminds me, how are we looking with the federal RACE grant that would be the Clinton River Trail connector and the Pike Street resurfacing? Any new tea leaves on the timeframe?
The application was submitted. It's something, again, I'm very proud of. Lots of people worked very hard on it. The total project cost did exceed twenty million dollars, and so we submitted an application with a twenty percent match of four point five million dollars and the remainder of the project to the RACE program. We are expecting a decision sometime at the end of June, I believe the date is the twenty-six, somewhere around there, and we are anticipating and hopeful for a full award. We did address all of the merit criteria grades that they provided on our last application and expanded on any areas where they gave feedback that we might better explain our narrative, and we feel really confident in the application we submitted.
Excellent. Bless you, Mr. Bass, Councilman Parker.
I'll just add one question. So basically, we got seven point five million dollars to either use it, that's, or give it back. We have no, you can't switch swap? I'm just trying to, because I was thinking, why can't it be, if it's going to be used for that connection, why can't it be used for the other part of Clinton River Trail?
This is the language that was submitted to MEDC and is listed in the legislation. I'd be happy to provide you with the copy of it. This is what was approved, and so we must use the funds in the ways that MEDC is.
Either, or, you, you don't have a.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, but I think these are, are really, this is a really nice use of these funds. It's taken care of some projects that are also needed, and we have other applications out for the very activities that Councilwoman Rutherford mentioned with different funding avenues with the federal government.
And so through federal funds and then other programmed items, I think that on the south side, we should be seeing Golf Drive redone, Bagley redone, Franklin Road redone, and then Orchard Lake Road, the section that is still remaining. I think that it was shared with city council that that's for a forthcoming approved project. I don't know when it lands, but it's in, in the pipeline too, because lord knows it needs it. But thank you for flagging that.
Other discussion on the motion before us. It's the resolution to approve the execution of a grant agreement with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation for the Enhancement Grant Program Award in the amount of seven million, five hundred thousand dollars for the Meadow Street Extension and Clinton River Trail Expansion Project. Roll call on adoption, Clerk Doyle.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries, resolution is adopted, and District Seven looks forward to seeing that put to the best possible use to advance the east side. All right, is there a motion to adopt the resolution approving the Bostic lease?
So moved.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Pro Tem Carrington. This is a specifically proposal to amend contract with DRJ Corporation, and so the motion is now before us. Mayor Administration, rationale, please.
Thank you, President McGinnis. I'm going to defer to Deputy Mayor Stevens, who's been working very diligently on this as we continue to seek a permanent home for the DPW department. And again, to piggyback on your earlier comments about emergency management, the reason we don't have a city-owned DPW facility is that the emergency managers sold it on the cheap, as they did so many other things in our community. And it's due to that that the city has, for a number of years now, lacked a permanent city-owned site for its DPW yard. I do just want to address a public comment that was made about the potential use of the Collier Road landfill site. That is, of course, a potential site, and it is under consideration still, but as the speaker noted, there are serious environmental challenges there because of the methane and other gases that are emitted from that site. And as a result, we certainly don't want to locate our DPW facility anywhere where it would be hazardous to our DPW employees. So that is the greatest problem and challenge and hesitation with utilizing that site. And with that, Deputy Mayor Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor Grimaldi. Council, clerk. So what you have in front of you is a resolution to allow us to move forward with Bostic Corporation or DRJ Corporation, commonly known as Bostic, to make an amendment to our lease. We are currently leasing one-third of a building on their facility that they have identified that they need to expand their business. They have an adjacent building, which they are willing to lease to us at the same cost. The only material change, the only material change in the lease is that instead of us paying one-third of the utilities, we will pay one-half of the utilities, because this building is connected to another building about the same size, and they're saying, well, before you were paying a third of the utilities because you had a third of the building, now we would like you to pay half of the utilities because you have half of the building. And we would be entering into this for, for a period of a year. That will allow us to continue looking for a new site. We do have a few sites that we have identified as our top leaders. We are working with CBRE, that's CB Richard Ellis, to actually engage with the owners of these sites to try and get a, a, a purchase agreement that we can bring to you to get permission to move forward on. But right now, we don't have any firm direction on that, and the lease, the reason why this was brought as a walk-on is because we have been working on this for about, very heavily, we've been working on this all year. We actually brought in a real estate firm about three months ago because we recognized that we were at a crunch point where we just did not have the manpower, time to focus on it, and we just, over the weekend, solidified this agreement with Bostic, and the lease itself ends before your next council meeting.
Pro Tem Carrington, followed by Councilman Rutherford.
Yes, thank you, President McGinnis. Deputy Mayor, it's definitely, after reading the contract, you guys do have a consolation option. So do you think before this year, we'll have some kind of permanent location for the DPW?
It, it is very much our hope that before the end of this calendar year, that we actually have identified and closed on a new location. It is really, really our hope that before this winter, we actually have moved into a location, and the reason for that being, the, the location that we are moving to allows us to move our trucks into a building overnight, which is absolutely imperative if we do not have our own salt dome. We have to have the trucks that have the salt loaded on them in a heated facility so that the, so that the salt itself is still usable the next day. So we would like to have our own facility before the end, before the winter comes, if at all possible. And, and again, we do have a few leads. There is no guarantee that we will be able to, you know, come to an agreement on those leads, but we do have a few leads, and we hope to be in there before the end of this winter. But at the very, very least, we hope to have identified a, a site by the end of this year in case we're not able to buy an existing building, but we have to, let me rephrase that, if we're not able to buy a turnkey building, but we buy a building that is going to need additional investment.
Yes, thank you. And my follow-up question is concerning the purchase center of utility costs. Do you guys have some kind of estimate of what it'd cost the city with that increase, twenty percent?
We don't expect that it is going to actually cost us significantly more money in utilities, because even though this, the property that we're moving to, we will be taking on, you know, a larger portion of the building proportionately, it's not more space, it's just a different building and a different configuration.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Rutherford, next on the speaker's list.
He asked the question I was going to ask, so I yielded.
Any further, Councilman James?
Yeah, is it a larger space than what we currently have?
It's not much larger, it's, they're comparable sizes.
Councilman Parker.
Will this place be able to hold all of the new equipment that we just approved for?
Yes and no. The interior building will be able to hold the equipment that we needed to hold in the winter. The yard itself is fenced and will allow us to keep all of our property that we are buying in a safe environment. So the no is that no, it will not off it inside, yes, it will off it in a fenced area.
But understanding the implement weather in Michigan for some of the new equipment, I thought when I, we last, when we last talked about it, I thought that the discussion was that all the new equipment would be stored inside.
And that new equipment will be able to be stored inside at other buildings that we own.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion on the motion before us. Hearing no further discussion, it is the resolution approving the proposal to amend the contract with DRJ Corporation. Whereas the city of Pontiac lease with DRJ ends on May 7th, 2023, and whereas the city of Pontiac still needs space for DPW operations, and whereas Bostic has agreed to lease the city adjacent space at the same price, and whereas the city of Pontiac DPW director finds the new space to be adequate for the short-term needs, now therefore be it resolved that the Pontiac City Council authorizes the mayor to execute an amendment to the agreement with DRJ Corporation, also known as Bostic, in a form to be approved by the city attorney. Roll call on adoption of that resolution, Clerk Doyle.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Five yeas, no nays.
That motion carries, the resolution is adopted. We are now at public comment. Pro Tem Carrington, are there any requests?
Yes, thank you, President McGinnis. Mr. Carleton Jones?
I want to speak to once again the opportunity we have here in Pontiac with economic development and workforce development. I, I want everybody to understand if we start talking about these million-dollar grants coming in there, there's no reason that we cannot include, we should have been doing a long time ago, on-the-job training. So when we get this road work, we get this all kind of work that we can see some Pontiac residents engage. If you engage that upfront, it won't cost us a dime. People would love to be able to put that in there that they would take on, on-the-job training to get some local participation if we make that a part of our proposals. Now I'm gonna tell you guys, this is one of the things we gotta look at. We try to cultivate talent in this city, but we don't utilize the talent when it come to the table. But if we don't start right at this table injecting that we demand on-the-job training, that is an economic development opportunity that we're missing. We're missing it. And we cannot keep on redoing old things, we gotta step up and do it newly. And the demand for talent right now, anybody who get a contract, they're gonna be grabbing people to get the work done. We need to require that they do on-the-job training with any kind of contract we do in this city. And it won't cost us more, it's a community, it's a community benefit. A community benefit. They gonna train people anyway when they get a large contract. So we gotta step up and do that, guys, we have to step up. I'm not here for my health. I know this arena, we don't have to go outside the city to get this knowledge. I would love to help. But if you don't reach to our own people and use them, we gonna be always going somewhere else and thinking, somebody got the answers for us. That's not true. That's not true. I just want to let you to know that on-the-job training is an economic development issue and workforce development is what we need to generate money right here in our city and uplift our residents. We talk about the level of our residents, if we engage on-the-job training, they get paid, getting trained, and we talk about these contracts, we will have our residents uplifted. It would help our city and it'd help everything. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, sir. Ms. Beatrice Wright?
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, also Mr. Doyle. I just wanted to always keep in the forefront my conversation about my special interests. Now, first of all, I'd like to commend that organization that came in, the Center for Employment Opportunity. I've worked as a board member for an organization called Old Fender Aid and Restoration many years ago. And I agree that that is much needed to, to aid in recidivism, that we need our young men and our young women to be in this community working. So I commend them. But back to keeping in the forefront my interests, and my interest is, is having a city that has a jewel. And, and the jewel in this city, I don't know what your opinion is, but if you labeled, where is the jewel? The jewel in this city is the Pontiac Municipal Golf Course, now known as the Links of Crystal Lake. Now if you have another jewel that you want to tell me it is, I'm, I'm open to that. So I want you to always, and I want the Council to come out and say, which side of the road are you on? Do you want the golf course or do you not want the golf course? Have a, have a conversation with us, you have to be transparent with us. You know, I, I know about mixed use, but I didn't know mud. I, I texted somebody in the audience, what is mud? Okay, because I was thinking, but anyway, I want to know upfront what is going on. I have in my mind something that I've only shared with my family, something that I'm about to do. And by and by, my friends become aware of what I'm about to do. But you are our leaders, you work for us, please be transparent with us. There was another thing I, I heard about, and we probably can't get involved in until next year. And I know you, you probably have heard about No Mo May. No Mo May. I don't know if you've heard about it, but it's where you don't give tickets for grass that has not been mowed in May because those of us who are thinking and understand global warming and understand why we have bees, we know that our pollinators need to have a flower to pollinate. And so No Mo May says that we don't cut our grass, we let those dandelions grow, knowing that we have pollinators that aid us in, in our lives. One piece, every third piece of something that you put in your mouth has been pollinated by a bee. And that's what No Mo May is. For those of you who are in the decision-making realm, it would be your jobs. And thank you for your, at that time.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Mr. Robert Bass?
Thank you, Councilman, I apologize for that mark. But I did ask a question before I came here and I was not going to speak, but I asked a question about the MUD, which is the mixed use. And the way that is written in the agenda was a little confusing to me because it, it alluded to, it was only gonna be two items spoken tonight, which is the pods and the clothing bins. So when I kept asking the question, what is the updates? Because that's what it said, updates and, well, it just kept on running into the pods and the bins. So my question is, it still is, all of the conversations that you must have had about updates, why did you have to do something like cloak this, this, uh, community development under two miscellaneous, miscellaneous items to me, which would be the pods and the stands? That was cloaking for community development. Okay, it ought, it, it might be a minute, minute piece to you when you bring a community development along with two other small items. But to me, it's just like how we lost a lot of our civil rights. They put a lot of small rules up there in primaries and then they had that one sneaking that got passed with the rest. And that's what I feel like tonight that happened to us. Because bottom line is, when you start chipping away at something and putting stuff in for the future, then you're bypassing the byproduct, which is us. Okay, you're, we're supposed to have a part in this. Okay, I'm looking at a large mass of land, something that just got sold, which is the golf course. We talking about another body of land that is a potential development. It has not been proved, but it's still a potential development. And we have other land back in that same area that's been sold, already been sold. So I've come to you, I've come to planning, I've come to zoning, and I ask, why don't you upgrade the master plan for land use? That way, you won't have all these people coming down asking you to do something for them and you say, well, we can't do it right now, the master plan is outdated. But tonight, you just said something that caught my ear when you said, well, we're going to put some bite in it so in the future, when developers come to us, we got something to go to. Well, if you update the master plan, all of us can be involved, not just you. You're ours, you're our beginning and you're our end. You're the front line and you are also our, the back line for us. If you close us out, then we close out, period.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Deidre Waterman?
First about the DPW yard, and I'm glad, Mayor, that you revealed that the Collier Road landfill is still in the running for the DPW yard. The DPW Department was so excited about it, it was a perfect situation. Now you say that you're still wondering whether there's a problem with the methane collectors. And I just bring to your attention that all this time that the emergency manager called in a waste hauling company, they have been using, they have been using the Collier Road lot. And it's only because they're no longer there, no longer needed it. And we had another waste hauling company that is now available for our DPW Department. So it is a, has all the space that was needed when we had 800 employees for the city, so certainly would accommodate that. And as you say, we are now dependent on salt in the wintertime from the county, which is a problem, but there is space on that Collier Road landfill to build our own salt barns. We're no longer dependent on the county and their hours. So those are reasons to consider that DPW yard still at Collier Road landfill. UWM, I just want to say what a good partner they have been to come to the city as we talk about how they have lobbied to get that $7.5 million for the, the improvements there and complete, complete the Clinton River Trail. And what they've done to the whole corridor over there on South Boulevard so they came to the city. There's a side story that I would love to tell you, sometimes maybe I'll write it up and talk about it. But you, getting UWM to this city, to come to this city, to bring their, their enterprise, was quite a long endeavor for two years, actually. They really wanted to get the Phoenix Center, whole area. And they were talking to the city to see if the city was interested in if they got the Phoenix Center and name that, also getting the garage. Well, they never could make a deal with the Ottawa Tower, so they, finally they just walked away. And I said, oh my gosh, we would lose such a wonderful entrepreneur to come to the city. So we, we worried with them, negotiated, and they finally decided to go where they are now on South Boulevard. And that's how we got them and they've been a wonderful partner for the city. Gave back the $1.9 million that we were gonna give them for a abatement. They said, you can use the money in Pontiac more than we can use it. So they gave it right back to us, so that's been great. But I can't leave without at least saying, Council, where is your audit? That is demanded by our city charter, which is yours sworn and upheld. I, this is so unusual to begin another process for budgeting and you don't have an audit that is required by the city charter. So we keep getting these excuses why it's not here, but it's gone to the state, why, why can't they show it to you? You know, you're the ones who need to see it and be asking these questions. It's very strange, you know, as we begin another budgeting session, that we do not have an audit completed and posted.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Waterman. Ms. Illo Miller?
No.
Okay. Ms. Darlene Clark? Chuck Johnson will be next, and then Gloria Miller.
In front of you, good afternoon again, this is Darlene Clark, speaking as a resident. In front of you, you have a citation. Mayor Grimal and District 1 councilperson would like you to believe that I'm a non-cooperative person. That's farthest from the truth. In front of you, you have, and he, he says that I've had multiple warnings and multiple issues and been fined and been in court with the situation. In his own words, he says, I have been in court. In court, on the 27th of February, it was told to move the pod and I had 45 days to do it. Forty-five days would have been the 15th of March for me to move that pod. In front of you, you have a ticket that was written out to me on a second attempt on the 25th of, um, this, of, of March. For $300, I was fined $100 and on that Friday, the $100 was paid three day, four days later at the court. The pod was removed on April 10th of this month, five days ahead of the 45 days. With that being said, the question is, why did I get a ticket to appear in court today on, on the 22nd of this month for a pod that has been gone? Now, the question to the Council, you want to put emphasis on Darlene Clark at 506 Nebraska. Thanks to the administration who put the picture on top of them for the people to see of my pod, that's a pod. If you drive by and I have pictures with dates, time, and numbers on there, and I have a Ring camera, and that camera has stamped the date to say when that pod was moved with the truck moving the pod out my driveway. So with facts being facts, according to Mr. Grimal, I don't cooperate and I have these warnings, do I appear in court on the 22nd to tell the judge, yes, that pod is, is gone? Do I pay the $300? To me, this is a conflict of interest with the administration and trying to prove something to me. Now tell me what you're trying to prove to me, because I don't get the memos. I don't get memos when people don't talk straight to me, and I'm talking straight to you. What's the real deal about me?
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Mr. Chuck Johnson?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, those of you here in the audience and those of you at home watching by television. Most of my comment that I was gonna talk about certainly has been spoken by the previous speakers. I want to start by saying to the mayor, thanks for the, uh, the information regarding the legal aspects of the, uh, of the pod, the bins, as it related to how they were located in the city of Pontiac. But we have to keep in mind, Council, that Carlton Jones has been lobbying and has been indicating how important it is for us to do the workforce development program in this community. I tried it years ago when I was in business, but it didn't, it just fell through the cracks. And it seems to me that's what it's doing again. But this is so important. Our young folks will not get into the workforce and the places they need to be and earn the kind of dollars that they need to if the, if this body doesn't do something about what he's trying to present here. I know for a fact, even, even the young women, I mean, this is not just for men, this is for some of you women that are sitting home babysitting, washing dishes, cooking. These contractors want you out there on those machines. They want you out there to be a part of their development, a part of their architecture, the whole nine yards. We need to get people on the payroll of some of these contractors that we're giving the contracts to. They have the room and the space and it's not gonna change anything as it relates to price. If it does, so what? It gives our young folk an opportunity to get involved, not just the young folk, but anybody who's qualified to, to get involved. The next thing about it is what the mayor talked, Mayor Waterman talked about as it relates to, uh, the DPW yard. We talked about that before. And as she indicated, it was being used. The, the methane, uh, monitoring tanks over there didn't have any bearing on the people who was using it before. So why can't we use it now? We're using other people's property and paying their bills while our bills continue. And I don't think it's right, it's not fair to the, to the taxpayers in this city. And as it relates to you, Ms. Clark, I can tell you what your problem is. It's the old councilperson over there, she don't like you and she, she smirks and laughs every time she has an opportunity to know that somebody from the city has come and violated you at your home and in your property. That's where the problem is, not with the mayor. Your problem is sitting at the end of the table over there. And I'm gonna tell you one more thing in my last 12 seconds. She gonna have to stop coming and sitting in that chair and earn the money from the taxpayers that she earns and keep on snickering and laughing and jumping up and running out of the room, half, half the time not in the meeting? Not a, always finding a way to throw a curveball at somebody in the audience.
That does conclude your time.
It's gonna come out, trust me.
Uh, thank you, sir. Ms. Gloria Miller?
Okay, um, first of all, I want to make this fast because, you know, I sit here and I listen to these council meetings. I try to think as the everyday Joe Bolt of a person that lives within the city of Pontiac. I can't go back home and tell any constituent, friend of mine in the city, what have you done to make their life? you done to make their life better? Every, excuse my word, every D time I come down here, it's downtown, downtown, downtown. When the heck you going to do something for the neighborhood? Over in front of the Harrington Schools, hole bigger than my truck fall in it. Fix that. I know you talking about getting a walkway. How many people in Pontiac going to walk away? They can't hardly get you a job. You're not thinking like we think. We live this stuff. We live it every day. And what I'm talking about, this kind of stuff, the mayor that I called you about, people doing work in their homes in the yard with trucks, diesel trucks, in the driveway, pocket on side of the street, they can't get in their driveways. That's what impacts the citizens every day. That's what impact, this is what I've been fighting for over 28 years in this city. I want to come to a city where it's clean and it's neat. And Mr. Jones is right. If you don't have your own, there's a slogan, Mr. Jones, take care of your own. You don't take care of your own, you can't take care of anybody. I was wondering, I was waiting for one of you guys with all these contracts coming up, I was waiting for one of you to ask, how many did you? And when I was on council, we did a benefit agreement. And that benefit agreement says that if you don't do X, Y, and Z for my district, you don't come to mine. That's the way I read mine. Maybe that's why I'm out of it. Because it's all about the citizens. You got to put them part of this process. You're not doing anything for them. Think about what you done did today. Oh, yes, you got that gum. And I'm sorry, I didn't get your last name about the golf course. That's the only jewel we got left. But I think people going to find out it's gone. It's gone, Pontiac. We don't own nothing. Absolutely nothing. Everything is gone. And as for the pod, and Darlene about your pod, it is petty politics. It is, we got to stop it. You don't have to like me. All I ask you to do is respect me. I don't need nobody like me. God is good to me. I don't need it. I ain't fighting for me. I made it. I'm trying to make other young people in this community make it. And until you do something for the young people, Mr. Jones have come up here a number of times, begging you, pleading you to involve him in the process to help our kids. Our kids are lost. Nobody's talking about the stuff in the paper about the school district. I know all of you know about it. Give our kids, give our kids opportunity, let's stop this petty stuff. You don't have to like each other. Do what's right for the citizens. And Mayor, I'm waiting on these issues in the city, because if you don't do something, I'm going to plan a march, and I'm going to call the press. Is that what we got to do? That's what we got to do. We got to live better than this. And Mr. Jones, keep pushing. We hear you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. That concludes our public comment.
Okay, we are at discussion. The first discussion item is in terms of the city council budget hearings for the fiscal year to come. As required by the city charter, as required by the city charter, the mayor of the city of Pontiac has submitted a budget proposal to the city council by May 1st of 2023 to answer the question that has previously been answered. The city's previous fiscal year audit has been submitted to the state, has been provided to city council, and is publicly available. The next step in our process is hearing from the departments about the proposal for the budget. So I want to first give the floor to the mayor, if he wants to give some top-level strategic thoughts on the budget. But more than anything else, I want to make sure the community was aware and council was aware about the upcoming opportunities where essentially, chunk by chunk, department by department, the proposed budget will be reviewed and will culminate with a public hearing, May 30th, and then two readings are required. So essentially, the budget will get many, many readings, but there will have a second, a first and second reading towards the end, and we are required to have the budget adopted by a certain set date towards the end of June. The fiscal year ends June 30th of this year, so we want to be prepared July 1st with the budget being in place. Mayor Grimal, quick thoughts on the budget you have proposed to the city council for the city of Pontiac?
Well, thank you, President McGinnis. I appreciate you, again, as you and I have done many times, setting the record straight that the audit for the past fiscal year was submitted to the state, was submitted to city council. It's amazing to me that we have members of the public, even former elected officials, who somehow believe that if they say or convey misinformation and inaccuracies enough times, that somehow people are going to fall for it. People of the city of Pontiac are smart. When we convey information to them and have to repeatedly correct misinformation that is continuously said, people know what is true. They hear us conveying the truth, and even when you continue to spread misinformation, it doesn't have an impact, because people are smarter than you think, and they know what's really going on, and they're attuned to the accurate information that we as responsible elected officials provide to them. In terms of this year's budget, we are excited about a number of provisions. Most importantly, it sustains the massive investments that we made in terms of building staffing capacity here at City Hall this current year. And just to remind people, for the first time since emergency management, the current council and I as mayor have started repairing the huge amount of damage that emergency management did to the city. We have brought back in-house the entirety of our building department that was outsourced and privatized by emergency management. We have brought back in-house the day-to-day DPW functions that were all outsourced and privatized by emergency management and that were kept privatized by the previous administration. So we have continued to build that staffing capacity, and this budget will sustain that additional staffing capacity so that we can continue to improve services for our residents. We have added code enforcement inspectors. When the previous city councilwoman who spoke this evening called me yesterday about the blight, I immediately responded to her, and we were able to have code inspectors out there today, the very next day after she contacted us about it, because we are being responsive to blight. We know we have more work to do, because the previous administration and emergency managers neglected this city for many, many years, and we're in the process of repairing the damage that was done. But this fiscal year made enormous investments in adding staffing capacity, reforming departments, and this budget sustains those, including the build-out of the grants department and the amazing work that they're doing, the build-out of the communications department and the amazing work that they're doing. We are also proposing to add a city attorney position so that we can better coordinate the outside legal work that's being done by outside firms, and actually, we believe, save money by having an in-house city attorney do some of the day-to-day work, like contract drafting, RFP drafting, contract reviews, so that we can actually save some money. Yes, we'll still need to use outside legal counsel, and that's okay. There are a lot of things that outside legal counsel is needed to do. But in terms of coordinating some of those outside legal counsel work, in terms of doing some of the day-to-day functions, we believe that it makes sense to add a city attorney who's in-house here at City Hall. So we're happy that we're able to sustain some of these improvements into the future. We are also proposing to add four staff people to our parks division so that we can better maintain our parks. Once we refurbish and open up bathrooms in the parks, we're going to need staff people who are actually servicing those bathrooms. Our bathrooms in the parks have been shuttered for probably 15 or more years now, in terms of a day-to-day basis. So now we have our reconstituted Parks and Recreation Department, which hadn't existed in about 15 years because of neglect by emergency managers and previous administrations. And we now have reconstituted that department. We're better servicing and maintaining our parks, and this proposed budget will add additional staffers in the form of four full-time employees to the Parks Division so that we can improve and enhance that important work. So again, we're very excited about those provisions that I've highlighted, along with a number of other provisions in this budget. We know that we have more work to do here at the city. Keep in mind, though, that we're not even fully through the first fiscal year whose budget was approved by the current council and my office. And that is the budget that started repairing all of the damage that has been done for literally decades in this city because of neglect by previous elected officials and emergency managers alike. So as we're now into the first fiscal year that we have budgeted for, we're excited about the progress that's being made. A lot of the additional staff positions that have been added in terms of in-house DPW positions, in terms of additional code enforcement inspectors, were just added in this tough labor market about three or four months ago. So a lot of the increased staffing capacity that was funded by this budget just came online within the past few months. And we're now in springtime, we're looking forward to those additional investments in code enforcement, DPW services finally bearing fruit, and we're excited about finally getting parking meters back online. The vast majority of work that we've been focused on at City Hall has not been for downtown, but has been focused on improving the neighborhoods. Yes, every downtown needs functioning parking meters if they're going to sustain economic development by facilitating convenient parking for residents. That's important for all of us, to have a functioning downtown. But we're mostly focused on making the improvements in quality of life in our neighborhoods by investing in parks, by cracking down on blight, and by improving the DPW services that are so important for all of us. And we look forward to the upcoming budget hearings, Mr. President, and thank you for the opportunity to say a few words about the budget that we've provided to the council.
Yes. Hard copies of the initial budget proposal are in each of the council members' mailboxes in the council legislative offices. And so the first hearing is this coming Thursday, May 4th at 5:00 PM in these chambers. And especially in the following Thursdays, we intentionally made it so that each Thursday, residents and council alike can orient themselves and know to anticipate it. The administration will share with us which respective departments will come forth on the 11th, 18th, and 25th respectively, based on department directors' availability and other competing schedule challenges. And I just want to make sure that the council had the opportunity to hear this initial and ask any questions before we dive into it, starting on Thursday. Councilman Parker, microphone?
I don't have any question, but I just wanted to share that on the 18th, I have a meeting, a late meeting, and I won't be here until about 6:00 o'clock.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that heads up, and feel free, as the month unfolds, other council members can let me know accordingly. Mayor Grimal.
In a similar vein, I long ago committed to saying the opening prayer at a National Day of Prayer event this Thursday, and that event kicks off at 6:00, so I may be absent for much of this Thursday's meeting. I will be here for part of it before I have to head out. I know that the deputy mayor will, as always, do a great job of being here in my stead, but I just wanted to give everyone a heads up about this Thursday.
Very good. Hearing no further discussion on that discussion item. The second discussion item, Councilman Goodman, you have the floor on the warrants clinic.
Absolutely. So along, well, Oakland Ford, along with Black Voters Matter, the Michigan Coalition for Black Precision Participation are on Wall Street, and Growing Real Alternative Everywhere will be doing a warrant clinic in Pontiac at the Bowen Center on June 3rd. The point of this is to be able to help people who have misdemeanor and traffic violation warrants to be able to get those solved with no police interaction, to be able to get them, you know, the actual resources and help that they need to, again, essentially be able to avoid a situation that I would say that most people believe does need to happen. No one should be having to really deal with the potentially very negative effects of law enforcement for something as simple as missing a court date for a ticket, because they missed a court date. So being able to make sure that people have that opportunity to be able to sign for that, because it's completely free, there is no risk of arrest, we will not have any officers anywhere on the premises. It'll be so that people with misdemeanor and traffic violations can get their things solved with no fear. And so if you are interested, or if you know anyone who has warrants, or you know someone who knows someone who has warrants in this realm, there is a QR code on the flyer that should have been on everyone's seat, and I will have some extras myself. You do have to pre-register, but there, again, there is time. It is June 3rd, so if you know anyone, do it now opposed to later. There are, I believe, 100 spots available. We from 10 to 2, Saturday, June 3rd, at the Bowen Center. So if anyone needs any more information about that, they can ask me. I do have flyers. Or also, you can contact former council president, executive director of Oakland Ford, Kermit Williams, at kermit@miopenford.org, or contact 248-270-6142.
Awesome. Any further discussion on that item? Hearing no further discussion. We move on to number eight on the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to proceed into closed session? Support. It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford and seconded by Councilman Goodman. This is to discuss the confidential legal opinion concerning collective bargaining strategy. So this is pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, Section 8, Subsection C and H, and that's Open Meetings Act, MCL 15.268, Subsection C and Subsection H, to review and discuss the confidential attorney-client memorandum dated April 27th, 2023, concerning legal issues in connection with the April 26th, 2023, union election results and upcoming collective bargaining process. So we intentionally scheduled this so that way public comment could have happened and all the items of business could have happened, so that way we don't hold you up. We will vote to come out of closed session in these chambers and continue with the agenda before adjourning this evening's meeting. Folks are welcome to stay if you like the ambiance and want to be able to hear in person the communications, closing comments, and other final business. Any further discussion on the motion before us to move into closed session? Hearing none. Roll call. Clerk Doyle.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Six shays, no nays.
All right, we are in closed session at 8:42 PM.
Yeah, or I can, what I can do is I can leave.
I have a stack of them in my car, so if you're going to scan them, if you need access, or I can give them that.
I have a whole stack.
You can have that copy.
Closed session here, closed session. Councilman Parker, Mayor Grimal, Clerk Doyle, Chief Assistant Clerk.
My copy, because I ain't trying to listen to you.
I was trying.
Is there a motion to come out of closed session? It has been moved by Councilman Goodman, seconded by Councilman Parker, that we come out of closed session. Hearing no discussion on the motion, roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
We are out of closed session at ten o'clock PM. We are now at Communications. City Council Communications are posted on the agenda, which you can access online or the hard copies. One to flag, the school district is seeking mentors for students at all grade levels. Micah Six has their new greenhouse ribbon cutting this Friday, May 5th. Pontiac High School dads doing their duties is May 6th, from 10 a.m. to 3 p.m. at the high school. The Montessori School, open house, held at the Montessori School at 825 Gulf Drive in Pontiac. That open house is this May 6th, from 10 to noon. Epiphany Studios at 770 Orchard Lake Road has their open studio gallery workshops, May 6th and 7th, from 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. And the other events happen after our next city council meeting. I want to point out that, again, the next special meeting on the budget for the city council is Thursday, May 4th, at 6 o'clock PM. Mayor Grimald, your mayor's office, communications?
In the interest of time at this late hour, I don't have anything to share.
All right, your closing comments.
So I want to, again, pass, since it's getting late here. So in the interest of time, let's move on and hopefully get home soon.
All right, Deputy Mayor Stevens, anything?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Doyle? Clerk Posse?
No comments.
All right.
All right.
Councilman Parker?
Oh, I'm following suit, no comment.
Councilwoman James?
No comment.
Pro Tem Carrington?
Well, I can't follow suit, I gotta thank some people tonight, so I apologize. Just want to thank everybody that came out for the Child Harrison Park cleanup. Really appreciate you assisting the city in trying to make our parks' recreation one of the best in the county, so thank you.
All right, Councilman Goodman? Councilwoman Rutherford, happy birthday to you.
Calm down. A lion is never concerned with the opinion of sheep. On Saturday, I'll be turning 44, and I have been practicing the attitude of gratitude. So I'm smiling a little more, put a little extra makeup on, got my lips all together. I'm doing that because I spent the year 43 complaining and yelling and arguing and ready to fight and jump over tables, and that's not my manner. At the end of the day, I believe love is love, life is light, and if you're right, you're right. I just want to celebrate everybody that is in my circle for staying with me, knowing that there are times when I've been on this side, ready to quit and give up, and for encouraging me to just go through so that I can grow through. Forty-three was a year of challenges, a year of strength, a year of endurance. And so I'm just happy to be Melanie Cherie Rutherford, AKA Mel. I will be having a short little celebration for my birthday after I sing at my friend's funeral on my birthday. I have no idea where it's at. My friend won't tell me, but y'all know, because I'll post it on Facebook. There also is a District 1 CDC meeting downtown Pontiac at the Oakland Press Building. I want to publicly thank Mayor Grimald for making sure that the Crestwood-Asterwood still got to keep their dumpsters, because last week, people dumped it in there that didn't even live in our district, and I'll talk about that another day. I also want to say that we can do more cleanups if put in the right proper time and place. And last, but certainly not least, I'm sorry that my smile bothers people, but I paid a lot of money for my teeth, so I'm smiling. Happy birthday to me, bye.
Yes, happy birthday to Councilwoman Rutherford. Just very briefly, it was shared in public comments, concern about the staging of the zoning text amendments for the ordinances that we considered. They have been pending for a month. They had a public hearing at the Planning Commission, recommended the Planning Commission in three weeks here. We could have done them each individually, but it would be the same content. So this would just seem to be the more efficient, because it's all the zoning code. So it's chapter, you know, it's Article 3, Chapter 7, Article 4, Chapter 1, those are the items dealt with. I only raise that because there will be more, there are a lot more. Now that we have a fully staffed planning division, they're dealing and syncing their, I shouldn't say that, that's apparent. They are delving into the matters of updating our code. And so-
that, that's apparent, they are delving into the matters of updating our code, and so I, we got word at our subcommittee meeting yesterday morning that there are multiple more planning and zoning amendments that they're working through for ordinance and code, so there will be others, and if you find that it's better for us to do them piecemeal, let me know that, so that way we stage it. Otherwise, if they're related or in the same document, they'll be coming in sort of these sort of comprehensive changes where it makes sense. So that's really just like a formatting decision about like, what's the best way to consider it? Most of the debate about the mixed-use districts only focused on the things that people had questions on, so that, but it was open and available and reviewed in terms of all the texts, there was no intent for it not to be known by all who would like to know it, and there are many more changes that can and should be made throughout our governing documents, because we, again, are making up for lost time. So I just want to share that, so that way if council members feel like they would like it to be piecemeal, like standalone questions, versus something a little more comprehensive, it's just six of one half does the other, it's up to this council about what's the better way to sort of finesse those considerations. But they all still have to go through public hearing, recommendation from Planning Commission, two readings at least, and this body chose to do three readings ultimately, and have further review by the subcommittee. So I think it was very thoroughly considered and thoughtfully considered. Thank you to council members that made it stronger. For the sake of time, I'll leave it at that, but is there a motion to adjourn?
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Parker, that we adjourn this evening's meeting. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries, we stand adjourned at ten